All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order to declare a quorum. We'll do flag salute and have Pastor Don come up and pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Don.
Lord, I thank you so much for this great day. And I have two prayer requests this day. First of all, for our city, that your kingdom may be established in our city, in our families, our children, and our city may be known as a city of peace with united families. And secondly, I wanna ask you for all these people that you have brought here to lead us at this season in our city. Bless them, guide them, give them wisdom. I ask for their families, that you may guard them and use them in mighty, mighty ways. Thank you for the great opportunity we have to serve you at this time in this position. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. God bless you.
All right, item number two, consent docket. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket for discussion under item three. Do I have a motion?
Is this from last month?
Yeah, we're on the one.
Yep, minutes from last month.
Okay, there was needed, make an amendment to the roll call. Scott was absent, but he was listed everywhere else as absent, but just not on the roll call.
With that amendment?
I just talked to Pam about it, so, okay.
You go first? You go second?
I second the motion to amend.
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Good.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
May I should approve?
All right, let's go and get staff reports. Fire chief.
I really don't have anything to add. Happy to answer questions.
That works. Please chief.
Chief Coy, the report speaks for itself. I just wanna point out one thing. It looks like we continue to have an influx of vehicular traffic. If you noted that we had over 900,000 vehicles in the last month that went through our city streets, and that is not including 39th Street or Northwest Expressway. So, when you see those numbers, keep that in mind also.
We got 10,000-plus of those, but that's awesome. All right, great, thank you. Public Works.
Did you wanna?
Oh, yeah.
In your packet, I included some utility photos. I kinda separated the two items. So, there was, I want to bring to your attention some utility problems that are coming up. Well, we're getting phone calls about dangling lines or repairs where they've replaced a power line, underground power line. A few weeks ago, Vicki called on Friday afternoon, and a truck had taken down a cable at 39th and Ann Arbor, and it pretty much shut the intersection down. Oh, that's it. So, there's a picture looking north along the intersection. You can see the line dangling over the signal pole. You can see right down at the bottom, right here, where the grass was burned because it severed the power line. This was actually on Monday. It was actually brought down on Friday. The cable was cut and moved to the side, or actually temporarily tied back up to this cable right here, and then it was hit again Monday. So, the intersection was without power for the whole weekend. You can see the amount of resources that it took up. We've got our fire truck here, we've got a police car, we've got another police car, we have about five OGN E trucks. Traffic has been diverted around the intersection. Here's actually the down secondary line that burned the grass that OGN E had to repair to get power restored across there. They eventually wound up just cutting the, I tried to contact Cox Communications, they said it was not their line, or, so they gave me another number, we think it was Dobson Communication Line. So, OGN E wound up cutting the line and pulling it to the side of the road to get the road open back up.
I haven't gotten a phone call from Dobson yet, so...
No, you have?
I have not.
You have not. So, when these happen, there's nobody to get a hold of. If you just go down from City Hall on 42nd, here's some cables that are just strung up on a power pole on left. Go down to 42nd and Grove, I don't know what this mess is.
Are you filming or are you with us?
Here's a low-lying line in front of Victory Church. Here's the corner, here's a double pole that's left with some lines and stuff from the installation of the new pole that's left, it hasn't been transferred to the new pole. Here's another line that's just dangling down north of the pole that could be snagged by somebody mowing the lawn, or etc., pedestrian. This here is along Grove, just south of 50th Street. Here's a double pole with all the menagerie of wires. Here's right by a residence where all these wires were cut and just left dangling. This is over by the Animal Clinic on 63rd, it's just rolled up and kinda tied to the pole. This is actually behind our Public Works yard, this is our Cox cable line that's fallen down. I actually contacted the Corporation Commission, they came out and looked at it, and this was a photo I took last week. So, there's a cable here and another cable that's just laying on the ground. This is actually looking into my backyard at one of my power poles. The Corporation Commission came out and looked at this, they did do some cleanup of the lines, but you can see the dangling lines and all the stuff hanging down on the poles. This here is just south of 50th and Grove, about half a block on the west side. AT&amp;T came in and put a pool box in. So, what do you do with the dirt? You just throw it up underneath the neighbor's tree. You can see right here, it's AT&amp;T, it's on the actual bolt. You can see a bolt left up, I guess you could hit that with your lawnmower, and some pull cords left. This is on 63rd on the sidewalk, this is an abandoned pedestal from, I believe, AT&amp;T. I tried to remove that back, but it's apparently been stepped on, it'll have to be cut off to be removed from the sidewalk. Here's damage to the sidewalk along 63rd. This is caused by when utility trucks go across and repair the poles, the sidewalk is only three and a half inches thick, so you can see damage to the sidewalk here, here, and here. These panels will have to be replaced, it'll probably take at least two days by Public Works to replace these panels to be in ADA compliance. This is, once again, in my neighborhood, there was an underground electric line to this security line, so this was done about two weeks ago. So, I guess they came in and dug it up, left some ruins, here's a rock here, some dirt piles, there was no stabilization or soil or sod put back in. This is over on 67th Court, here's some staking flags, this is where they came and repaired the electric line. Little bit better job, but it would be pretty hard to mow, pretty clumpy. This was a complaint received by the citizen in this house. This was found during our recent sewer inspection, this was a manhole that was not previously known about, was discovered with a sewer camera. It was actually dug up, and when we lifted the manhole cover, we found two communication lines. Here, here's another one. Originally, we thought it could be an ONG gas line. ONG did their due diligence, and they came out that day, we were out there probably about six hours, they actually hydroboarded back behind to confirm it was not a gas line that had went through the sewer main. We tried to reach out to get somebody to, I actually talked to an AT&amp;T person, told him about it, no response. I actually turned in another locate to say, hey, we're gonna come out and cut these lines, no response.
Wow.
This was supposed to be a video showing how the crossboards occur. Basically, it's a machine that bores horizontally, it goes down and bores to put in a new gas line, and that's how that line got in there. Let's see if this thing works.
Is that line active?
We're assuming it is, it was flagged with an AT&amp;T and a Cox flag. It was OKI located. This was supposed to be a video of a crossboard where the gas migrated into a house, I did something wrong on the link, but right here, this house actually explodes and is leveled in less than three seconds. So, this could be a serious problem. In my research in the Google, there was five or six other videos of houses throughout the United States that had blown up due to crossboards and explosion entering through sewer lines.
Wow.
Right here. Takes a second.
Mike, do we have any recourse onto this?
Well, that's what I'm getting at. I try to reach out and call people, and even through the Corporation Commission, and you can see the results of that. So, they tell you to contact the service provider, but when you go out and look at the dangling line, there's no name on it. That one bolt just happened to have Cox cable, or if there's a flag, you might be able to tell. Okay.
I know I have this in my backyard as well, where they've cut the pole down, there's just a chunk of pole that's up about 15, 20 feet, but I actually think I saved the little door flyer that they put on, so if I have that, I will let you know.
All right.
For that was cable.
So, anyway, so this is just becoming, getting more phone calls from people when they dig, and when they, lines on the ground. We had one cable that was broken on Meridian, and it was laying across, it actually came loose from the pole, it was laying across, I believe, 46th Street. And so, their solution was, they just came out and cut it and rolled it up and put it on the pole to the south, so. I don't know if this is a question for Matt, but I just wanted to make you aware that this is becoming more and more increasing problem for us. All right, that's all I have for crossboards at the moment.
Cool.
Just a couple things from our report, and I appreciate, Mike made a comment about the intersection at 63rd and James Capps, that is substantially complete, we're waiting on the final inspection on that, if you've been through that. I accidentally drove down the road and turned around so that it would, you know, turn red on 63rd Street. It does function whenever a car is there, but anyway, it is active, and I believe they've got all the striping done. I didn't wanna bring up the striping on 63rd and MacArthur, I think there was approval a couple months ago for Action Safety to come out to refresh those stripings. I hope everybody drove through that, it's, you definitely recognize the stripe and the brightness of, you know, the new thermo, or it's not thermoplastic, it's a multi-polymer type material that was done on the state contract. We are going through some grant applications. I know that recently, there was an engineering contract that's gonna be negotiated for the sidewalks along the west side of MacArthur, so you'll, I mean, that's a process that will happen on that, but we are also extending that application to the pedestrian bridge, which we've talked about before. I think maybe Dakota may have some comments about other grants, but anyway, it's a fairly active month for that, and then also the updates on the wastewater system, that'll be coming up in the municipal utility authorities, so.
Cool. I got a nice letter and a card from people saying they love the intersection, so that was really nice. People that ride their bikes all the time, so. City Planner.
So, the only thing I have to note is that we turned in the Sari application yesterday, so we should hear back on that in the next month. And then the Route 66 application is due, I think, at the end of this week, so whatever ends up being decided tonight from the EDA meeting, I'll move forward with that and get that submitted.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, City Clerk.
Still no audit. They said they might have it to me by next Monday. I'm supposed to have it filed with the feds by the 27th, which is a Saturday, so it means I should file it on the 26th. If we get it, we might have to have a very quick special meeting, because I cannot file it with the feds if you all have not seen it and accepted it.
Can we do it electronically?
Do what?
See it and accept it electronically?
You have to accept it, yeah.
At a public meeting?
Yeah. It is very much pro forma that you will receive the audit at a meeting, and I would encourage you, when we get to that point, receiving it is not, I've reviewed it in full and I agree with it, it's literally acknowledging that you received it. If there's something in the audit that you wanna discuss, we can put items on future agendas, but sometimes the audits come and, well, can we table this until we've had time to read it? Can we, you know, take a whole bunch of time here? If you have questions, the auditor may be here, and that'd be a time to ask him, but we can always have them come back to answer some questions, but there may be a time crunch to get it acknowledged as received.
Okay, so we just acknowledge that we got it, we don't have to absorb it all in detail?
Yeah, I mean, you'll be absorbing it, you know, for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, they're dense, they're very dense, a lot of charts.
Yes, they are. Well, so we'll call a special meeting, most likely, so probably an emergency special meeting, or depending on when we get it versus Friday.
Check your schedules for next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Could be on it.
Well, it's due Saturday, Pam, in practicality, would be filing it Friday, if she can file it.
And then, just say, revenue is not exceeding last year, our expenses are exceeding last year, so, not sure, I can tell you right now, at this point, there is no money for non-call. At the rate we're going, I'm not real clear as to how I'm supposed to make a budget for next year when our expenses are already exceeding the revenues. So, you know somebody that wants to move into War Acres, go grab 'em and pull 'em in.
You mean businesses?
Yeah. Any business, anything.
No, thank you, Pam. The Attorney? Nothing to add? Mr. Weber. While he's coming up here, I'll say, I met with Margaret Love earlier this month, and something we need to look at is if our ordinances for our collection of taxes reads, we collect whatever the state collects, or otherwise, so we need to make sure that we have our own ordinance put in place to make sure that we're not tied to, we collect what the state collects in grocery tax, so. Matt will be taking care of that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and pardon me for moving a little slowly tonight. Brief report, the only thing that we haven't discussed, actually, two things, that one, we've discussed previously, the body worn camera grant. Upon further inspection, they're giving priority to that for new departments that do not have BWC programs in place, which doesn't apply to us now. We do have a, I did go ahead and fill out the first part of that application, the second part of that application is due the 29th of this month, but it seems unlikely that we would be, that we would be prioritized, and nationwide, they're only giving 28, so we need to think about that very carefully in terms of what that would look like from a priority standpoint. The other, the only other thing, besides two things, we heard this week from the Attorney General's office that they're going to begin to make opioid dispersment, so we'll see when we, when we get that money, knock on wood. And I also heard this week from the Oklahoma Department of Agriculture, Food and Forestry regarding a tree grant that we did some time ago, that they're looking to make dispersment sometime by the end, or at least award announcements sometime by the end of this month. So, those are two things, and then announced, actually announced this week, this last week, was a federal highways application that we should have a conversation with the city planner about relating to reconnecting communities. Some pretty significant and very specific requirements for that one that I'm not sure we meet, but certainly wanna have a conversation about it before we just kinda throw it out the window. My guess is that we don't meet it, but otherwise, it's been a fairly quiet month, other than the stuff you already knew about. Questions, comments?
Did you say they were dispersing opioids?
Yes, we're gonna disperse some opioids. In case anybody didn't know, we're also Purdue Farm, no, I'm kidding, for the record, this is a public meeting. No, as you recall, the Oklahoma Attorney, well, the Oklahoma Legislature put forward an opioid protection board by statute, what, almost two years ago, and there was some settlement money that was distributed by a grant process.
Okay, I do remember that.
And so, we're on the cusp, again, knock on something, of being able to distribute that money, and our application was for $60,000, and I have not yet heard that there's been any discrepancy in that, so we'll...
Thank you for your clarification.
We'll see what happens. Any other questions?
If we get that, is that gonna be for mental health, drug rehabilitation, or Narcan?
So, yes and yes. So, we asked for all three of those things, and so we'll see how they, I think one of the things that we have to do from a negotiation standpoint is kind of determine which parts of that, how much money goes in which bucket.
Great, thanks.
All right, cool. Any other questions?
Anything else?
All right.
Thank you, as always, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna move up item number 13, so we can let Mr. Worrell get out of here. So, discussion of possible action on personnel board member appointment, term expired July I emailed everybody Mr. Dakota's resume, if you wanna come up, anybody has any questions or anything for you?
I think I did.
Thought I remember getting it.
Well, maybe I didn't hit send. So, he'll be able to tell you anything that you'd like to know. So, the personnel board deals, Matt, do you wanna explain what the personnel board does?
Yeah, so we've got, I'll call it not unique, but relatively rare form of government in Oklahoma here, but the strong mayor form of government, where the chief executive is an elected official, anticipating that there could be instances where someone gets elected to office and they just start firing people who maybe weren't aligned with them politically. We have a check within our charter that employees can appeal adverse employment actions to a personnel board who has jurisdiction to then determine if the decision was made for reasons other than the best interest of the city. The personnel board is one of the only boards that we have where you do not have to be a resident of the city, and we have had non-residents routinely serve on the board for years. Jim Priest, who's now retired but excellent attorney in Oklahoma City, was the chair of the personnel board, so they are there as a check in the process to make sure that if employees feel they were treated wrongly, when something happened to them, when the mayor takes action against them, there's somebody they can appeal to.
How many members are there?
I believe three.
Three.
And the other two members are?
I know one of them is Shank, Shashank, he was just actually appointed earlier this year. He's a business manager for a dental company, and he's been in human resources forever. And then, Mr. Dakota, he's got a plethora of background with working with a wide variety of people with his background, and he's just somebody I trust for his judgment, and whether you like it or not, he'll tell you exactly how it is, so, which is the type of person you need. So, that's the reason why I've asked him to be here. So, if y'all have any questions for him, he'll be happy to answer those.
Well, what's his name?
What's his name? Thank you.
Dakota Worrell?
What? D-A-K-O-T-A.
D-A-K-O-T, yeah. W-O-R-R-E-L-L.
Yes, ma'am.
W-A-H-O.
W-O-R-R-E-L-L.
All right, what's your background?
Well, I'm a little bit of a problem solver. I've been in business putting out fires for just over 10 years.
But you're right.
I've served under several different municipalities on various commissions and boards, I've been on planning and zoning, I've been on some historic committees, but in general, my work, I do development, I do changes of use, like purchasing hotels, converting them into apartment complexes, I do public-private partnerships, I've done some of those with municipalities. What that boils down to in context of this position is that I've had to work with every social class, every background in America, and kind of learn how to manage those people, work with those people, encourage those people to flourish, with very different temperaments required in each one of those situations. That's probably the one, the one skill set that I've found is difficult to teach people is not necessarily doing what you can do, but doing what you should do, and as a leader, we've definitely tried to embody that in our business.
What part of town do you live in if you don't live in War Acres?
Actually, we very much tried to live in War Acres, but your housing market here is very competitive. Currently, we're over around 50th Street, kind of like Northwest OKC, we're not far, about five minutes from here.
Is that your corporation, or your company?
No, that's my residence, that's where I live.
What's the name of your company?
DW Investors.
Say that again.
DW Investors.
DW Investors, okay.
And I do have some investment here in War Acres, like several of my properties, even though they are maybe just outside of city limits, we do pay our sewer bill to the city of War Acres, and we do actually pay our bill, I know there's been some problems with that. But yeah, we're invested in this area, almost all of our complexes are within five minutes of this city.
If you don't mind, what's your education?
I went to college for a short time for business, did receive my associate's degree, but other than that, my education has been real life.
On the ground.
I've been blessed to have mentors that I don't think that you could, you could buy with money. I've had some incredibly kind and good-natured people take an interest in me, and I've been very lucky to have that. But I go out of my way, I mean, I go to fair housing seminars, I attend city council meetings regularly, really, we're always a student, I'm always learning, my education is continuing.
Amen, good. And what made you interested in being on this personnel board?
Well, we relocated from Idaho about two years ago, and Idaho is very much similar to War Acres as opposed to the broader Oklahoma City in the sense that most communities in Idaho are much smaller with greater ties, right, greater community ties. So, when we were in Idaho, we were very involved, pretty much on every level, from building new parks to donating, like I said, being on various committees, and since transitioning out here with just what that takes, buying new units, renovating new units, hiring new staff, getting your infrastructure, we've had our nose to the grindstone for the last two years, and we're finally ready to get involved in our communities and start paying it forward.
You keep referencing "we," who's "we"?
I was just one of the first things I was taught in business, it's never "I," it's always "we," it's us against a problem, and in success, it's us and the glory. So, we, my people, my team, my mentors.
You said that the name of your company was VW Investors?
DW, as in Delta Whiskey, sir.
As in your initials?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's real estate investing?
Yes, sir.
And the people who work for you are 1099 contract or W4, W2 employees?
W2 employees, though we do employ quite a few subcontractors. We have our property management in-house, so we've got four full-time employees that do that just here, and then we also have our maintenance and renovation in-house, so we've got five full-time employees that are doing our maintenance and renovation, all W2, and then amongst our vendors that we do for subcontracting work, electricians, plumbers, HVAC, sewer, general handymen for things that maybe fall outside of our specific scope of work, all those would be 1099 contractors, etc.
Does your company have an internal human resources department that is independently headed outside of yourself?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions.
Any other questions?
I would've liked to have seen the resume.
Yeah.
I swear it was, yeah, it was like, I am 99.6% sure that I sent it, so obviously, it's that .04 that didn't happen, so, I'll make sure you have it.
Well, I would like to have it before I vote on this, so that I can look into it, understand it a little bit more, and maybe we should table this until that can be presented.
Are you on LinkedIn, or one of those?
Well, I just pulled up your website, and it says you're a multimillionaire.
It's maybe one of my, one of my callings.
Real estate investor, master of selling financing.
We've been very blessed, yes.
Real estate broker, yeah.
How quickly does this position need to be filled, Mayor? It's, I don't know. Do we have the time to table it, I guess is the question? Yeah, I think we do, I think that'd be fine, and we can vote, you don't need to come back again, but if you guys had any other questions or anything. Les, you'd like to make a motion to approve either way?
I'll make a motion to table.
To the next regular meeting?
To the next regular meeting, yeah.
I second.
Somebody seconded?
Yes, Triby did.
Sorry, I didn't hear him. I was waiting to hear somebody. Myers?
Yay.
Triby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Bunthere?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mister Mayor, council members, thank you very much for your consideration.
See you next time.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Alright, back to item number five. Discussion of possible action on partnering with Communities Foundation of Oklahoma, a 501(c)(3), to help assist in getting grants. We have Ms. Rose and her team, and we talked a little bit over the phone. Kelly Parker, Mayor up in Alva, was the recommendation that we look into working with them because they work out really well up there, and I'm sure you work with some other municipalities as well, and also Mr. Weber knew you as well, so thank you for coming.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate you letting us visit with you this evening. And first off, what I'd like to do is introduce, as the mayor referenced, my team, or two of my team, Carolyn Stryker, who is our coordinator, who actually does our community engagement work. And then, with her is Sarah Parcell, who's our director of philanthropic services, which is just kind of the people that, she's, she's the front door into the organization. And I'm just gonna quickly kind of go through this presentation, this outline, so to help you kind of understand a little bit more about who Communities Foundation of Oklahoma is. I think our history is really important. We were started by a gentleman named Tom McCaslin out of Duncan, and he wanted for non-major cities the same benefits that community foundations have outside of Oklahoma City and Tulsa. He wanted for smaller communities to have that benefit. So, he, being in Duncan, though, pulled together some of his friends in different communities. At that time, a gentleman in Alva, and Weatherford, Shawnee, number, number of other communities, and they started Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. That was about thirty-two years ago. Kind of moved forward for about ten years with it just being they were personally and individually seeding different community foundations. And then, in the late nineteen nineties, he had a business transaction with Gene Rainbow, and he shared with Gene what he was doing. And if you know anything about Gene and the Rainbow family, they are very committed to rural communities, to non-metro area communities. And so, Gene joined in the effort of really seeding and beginning to populate community funds, community foundations throughout the state of Oklahoma. So, we consider those two gentlemen to be our founders. We do work statewide, and when we say statewide, we mean Laverne to Miami, Durant to Altus, and everywhere in between. We work with communities of varying sizes and varying, in varying depths of engagement. Some of the communities that we work with are very organized and know what they're doing, and kind of just go about their business. We are kind of their fiscal monitor, and I'll get to that part in just a minute. Other communities really want us to help come in and help facilitate the community conversation. What can a community fund do in that community? How can we help them kind of get organized and identify what are the greatest needs and how to develop the resources to be able to address those needs? You see there, our mission is to strategically distribute charitable funds, maximize our donors' impact to strengthen their communities through stewardship and sustainment. What we really do is serve as a philanthropic hub for activities throughout our state. We really consider ourselves to be the back office, the administrative, the investment monitors, so that donors and communities and nonprofits can go about the impact. They can focus on dreaming for their community, they can focus on identifying greatest needs, and then, we're just doing the compliance, administrative, financial work so that we can create together that impact. We work really hard at connecting people in, you know, different, different parts of their community. Because sometimes, when we go and work with a community, they're, the leadership of a community knows kind of what they're thinking about, but don't know really how to engage other people in that community. And so, we really do work with a bunch of, with a number of communities to help with that. We really value, when we're working with a community, providing education to that community as a whole, whether it's for next-generation transfer of wealth, whether it's helping understand how those individuals can help with their community, but we're, that, that's one of the ways that we engage in different communities. The way I think about community funds is the stone soup story. Maybe individually, we don't have enough money or enough resources to affect change or to implement something, but when we pull those resources together into a community fund, we can make some pretty significant changes and impact. So, we're thinking that, based on the conversation with the mayor, there's a number of different tools that we have, but we're thinking probably a fiscal sponsorship, and that's just an internal technical term between us and the IRS. But we have a number of examples of how we have worked that kind of process. Essentially, what we do is we extend our 501(c)(3) umbrella over your projects and your work. Community foundations are a special designation within the IRS code. So, most 501(c)(3)'s, when they apply for their 501 status, they have to state what their mission is, what their purpose is, and they have to stay within that. As a community foundation, we have a broader range. We are allowed to, as I said, extend our 501(c)(3) umbrella over others' missions, as long as we fall within certain criterias that relates to endowments, donor-advised funds, fiscal sponsorships, there's different categories and different rules that IRS sets out for how we are required to comply on behalf of our donors or our communities. And that's part of what, that's part of the expertise that we bring to the table, is we worry about that, so you don't have to. Again, the administrative piece, we handle all of, when, all the administrative components. So, when a contribution is made, we take care of the tax acknowledgement, we take care of the investment based on your direction. And we have a number of different investment pools, we can talk about that when that's appropriate. But we, we manage all of that, and our board has the fiscal responsibility of oversight in managing the investment strategy, but also the investment performance. And then, we also, as part of our compliance with the IRS, ensure that all contributions that go out, all distributions is the word we use, are for a charitable purpose, and we're the ones that are responsible for ensuring to the IRS for audit purposes that that's been accomplished. So, as an example that we went ahead and included was the work that we're doing with the Anadarko community. Anadarko is a community that has been working with us probably for about three or four years. So, they're newer in our, in our world. And they kind of just reached out and said, "We're a poor community, but we have big dreams and would like for you to help us." And so, after several community meetings, working with people that were really engaged, they decided that reading and access to books was what they, the first thing that they wanted to do for their community. So, we worked with them to access a grant from the Oklahoma Partnership for School Readiness to support the Dolly Pardon Imagination Library. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
Yes.
Provides books, you know, very low-cost to all children under a certain age. So, that grant comes through us, and then, we pay the Dolly Pardon Library and for the distribution of those books. So, that's just kind of an example, one example of, of a community that we're working with. They also have big dreams of street festivals, and it, it's really fun to, to get to work with them and see what they're wanting to do. And so, really, just in summary, the value of what we bring to a relationship is fund management, management, marketing, and communications. We're happy to help if, if that's something that you all want to figure out how to do, is to communicate with your community, we're happy to help with that. We're happy to help with fundraising activities. If the, if you wanted to have an advisory board that was gonna steward something this separate from city council, we can work with helping them get organized, although you've got a city attorney, so he can probably take care of that. And then, if there is, as part of your vision for your community, a grant program, like you wanna set up, you know, you receive donations, whether it's from a grant or otherwise, and you want to receive grant applications for the disbursement of those funds, we have that capability and can manage it, even though you all or whoever you designate would be the decision-makers and the reviewers. And so, really, getting started with us is pretty easy. We, I think, the mayor and I have had a preliminary conversation, but I think we need to have a deeper understanding of what the goals were, so we can make sure and get the funds set up correctly. And then, do a questionnaire so that we can document that information, decide who your fund advisors are. So, fund advisors are the people that can give us direction. And then, we complete the documentation electronically, and then, you all are in a position then to advocate and advertise, and we can receive those funds on your behalf. As it relates specifically to grants, because I know that's one of the specific topics, there are often grants that only a 501(c)(3) can apply for. So, when that application was completed, we would, and we figured out how to do it jointly. You all would apply, but using our EIN number and explaining in the grant application body, and the content, that you're working with Communities Foundation of Oklahoma as your fiscal sponsor, the funds would come here and then be deployed based on the guidance of whatever the fund advisors or the decision-making body was. So, that's just kind of a quick summary. We work with, didn't include this a minute ago, we work with twenty-plus communities at varying levels. We work with, you know, Talquah that has a multimillion-dollar endowment, to Beggs that is specific project-oriented, Anadarko that has a program set up but other goals, and everything in between. So, it is truly our honor and pleasure to get to work with communities. I mean, I, I tell my staff all the time, we get to do the greatest work in the world. We work with people that have already decided they want to make their community better. And all we have to do is just facilitate and administer. So, with that, I'll, I'll close my comments, because I wanna give you plenty of time to ask questions and have whatever, ever conversation would be beneficial for you all.
Wonderful, thank you. So, one of the reasons why we reached out to you and I was talking to Mayor Kelly is because there's a lot of grants that my counsel has seen and other people, our grant writer and other people have brought to our attention, and we were not able to even apply for.
Right.
You know, in regards to our ACOs trying to help with their animal shelter or even getting certain other types of grants. So, the reason why I've asked Ms. Rose to be here is to put another tool in our toolbox to help us with growing the community, because that's what we're here to do. Money is the number-one thing that we do here on this horseshoe, so, but with that.
Would, would that help with the Pine, Pines East Dam with the HOA obtaining the FEMA grant they were trying to get?
I highly doubt it, but I don't know.
Okay.
That's probably more of a Mark question.
I think it's, it's, where we would be of most benefit is for those grant applications that do require a 501(c)(3). Now, we'll tell you, we work with a number of HOAs. But, you know, that may be more just on a private, private donation basis.
Right. Well, they were talking about forming one, so I.
Oh, okay, right.
Five oh one.
C three?
Or C or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, something, okay.
Is there a cost for your services?
Yes. It, it depends on what structure we use. For most of our community funds, and, and, and I'm not being evasive, I'm trying to be transparent. Depending on the amount of engagement you're looking for, if it's truly gonna be a little bit more transactional, then it's two percent.
Two percent of what we bring in?
Two percent of the balance of the fund, I'll say this a couple of times, because it's not, not the easiest. It's two percent of the balance of the fund monthly divided by twelve. So, we take one twelfth per month of two percent of the fund balance, okay? So, and we do this monthly, it's called revenue share. And that would be, if, if you're invested, if the dollars are invested, you get a percentage of the revenue earnings for that month. So, monthly, we receive a statement from our investment managers, this is how much this pool earned this month, and you get your percentage of that. Then, so we apply revenue share, then we take the fee. Does that make sense?
Question please, on that, on the investment, do, do we have a fee for the money management also?
No. The, and, and when I say the two percent, so if we kind of got into deeper conversation and you wanted our help with grant writing or with reporting or, so once we kind of get a little deeper into understanding the workload and the resources that we're gonna need to commit, like the communities that we like go to very frequently and do a lot of work, the fee is higher. But we, we negotiate that, there's no surprises.
So, it's always a percentage of what's brought in?
It's a percentage of the balance.
What is?
So, so, just pull my calculator.
Sure.
So, if we have a balance each month of, say, fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And it's two percent of that number.
Mm-hmm, divided by twelve.
That's a thousand dollars divided by twelve. So, we pay you on that month eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for putting the calculator to it.
He beat me to the, he beat me to the math.
Oh, okay.
I have, I did it for a hundred grand.
Okay.
I'm extra hopeful.
So, what is the source of your funding? Do you have like a single source, or you have multiple sources, or one big contributor, or several small contributors?
We have a multitude of, of contributors. So, as I mentioned, initially, Mr. McCaslin and Mr. Rainbow kind of, like, I'll tell you the Talquah story. He went, Gene was in Talquah talking to a friend, he said, "I'm gonna give you five thousand dollars to start your community fund, and then, you're gonna gain contributions from your community." So, our resources are from those fees, and currently, we have over? Have we hit the over a thousand? We have over a thousand funds. Yeah, so does that makes, does that help?
Yeah, I just, I just was curious whether it's like one big.
No.
Contributor, like some sort of corporation or a government entity?
No, we're, we are truly the stone soup method. We receive ten-dollar contributions, and we see, receive two-hundred-thousand-dollar contributions.
How do we compete with other communities that are similar in size to War Acres? I mean, who decides how, how the money goes to which community?
Well, so, we're, we don't make grants.
Yeah.
Well, we do, we have, we have a pot of money over there, but what, what I think, I was here to, to present was.
More transactional.
Right, if you're going to apply for a grant, then we would be the entity making the application and holding the funds until you all wanted to spend it.
So, do we tell you that we wanna make a grant?
Yeah, no, yes.
So, so we have our grant writer, so we have Mr. Weber. So, he'll apply for grants that would only be allowed for nonprofits to receive. So, as a city entity, we couldn't get them. But as a nonprofit, because we'll have a partner, then that's how we can actually apply for them. So, it's another tool to be able to get things that we could not otherwise get.
Is there a charge, is there a charge that you would have to set us up as a, to set us up a 501(c)(3) account?
That's what we just went through. So, it's not, you won't be a separate legal entity 501(c)(3). You would be under our umbrella.
Okay, it's umbrella.
Right, so basically, working with us eliminates having to apply for a 501(c)(3), filing your nine ninety every year, filing your compliance.
Because you're the umbrella, okay.
Right.
Is there a contract, and if so, how long is that contract?
Yes, we do a contract, we call it just a fund agreement. Yes, we do a contract. We call it just a fund agreement. And there's not a term on it. It's as long as you've got money in the account and you want to work with us.
The fund advisors of yours, are they all local?
They're yours.
They are, so.
You tell us who the decision makers are. So typically, let me put it in the context of like a, a family. Or, you know, yeah, like a family. They will identify the two to four people within their family network that can make decisions about spending money. So same thing for you all. You all would say the mayor, Scott and Judy are the fund advisors. So, so if Jim calls me, I'm going to go to Judy, Scott, or the mayor and say, "Can I give Jim whatever he's asking for?"
Was that what you was asking, fund advisor?
I guess, I guess I mentioned that wrong. I meant more the, the investment managers.
Thank you, that's what I thought you meant.
I'm talking about Series 7, Series 6.
Okay, okay. So our, we use Bank First Trust as our investment manager, managers.
So they're federally covered advisors?
Yes.
Do you actively seek out grants or do we bring you the ideas?
We, I mean, if.
It's another service.
Yeah, it's, it would be another service.
Okay.
But generally, I'm thinking, in most communities, the community has the idea and we can do some research and kind of point you in different directions, but we don't actively do that research.
What's your website? Because I'm trying to get to it and it says this connection is not private.
Oh, cfok.org.
CFOK.
Dot org.
Okay, it's taking me to dev.cfok.org and it says it's trying to steal my information.
No, 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 no.
So, I mean, I'm just.
That's how they make money.
Trying to, trying to go there, right?
I can pull it up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on it too.
Yeah, it, it, it keeps taking, telling me that. So I'm trying to get to the part that says what we do.
Oh, okay.
You need to upgrade your phone. There's an update waiting for you tonight.
Okay, well, I, yeah, just trying to get, say what we do.
That sounds like me. I'm always the one saying, "I can't get to something," and they're like, "Have you turned your phone off or something?"
Yeah, I did.
No.
Okay.
So if the investment, so if we, we create grants, you guys kind of handle a lot of stuff for us.
Right.
If the investment managers take that, that money that we receive, invest it. Let's say that the pool is a million dollars.
Okay.
You get paid 2% of the pool divided by 12 months at balance of pool, right?
Okay, yeah.
So we're going to pay you $1,666 a month if that money remains constant, because it's going to change each month.
Okay.
Things go up, things go down, but.
So you, so you're, you're saying you've got a fund of a million dollars?
We've got a fund of a million dollars. Your investment managers get a hold of it, they expand the money.
Yes.
So let's say we started off with half a million, they expand it, they get to a million. Then it's 2% of the million divided by 12 months, that's what it is at the end of the month.
Right.
So we would pay you $1,666 and change for that particular month.
I trust your math.
Okay.
Yes. And part of that, we're.
I mean, that's middle school, it could be a million, just saying.
No, that's exactly how it works.
I don't see a lot of metro Oklahoma cities or metro locations that are part of your community funds. People, it's more outlying. How does that play into the game? I mean, we're obviously very metro.
Yes. And we're not biased. I think that honestly, I don't know that there's many other smaller communities in the metro area that have community funds. We work with a lot of individuals and families in the metro area. And when I say metro, I'm saying greater metro, you know, Canadian County, Cleveland County. We do have the Norman Community Foundation, we've got the Shawnee, you know, so, so we've got more in that area. But, but I think you're right. I mean, I can't recall, there's not a, yeah, I mean, I can't, there's, well, we do, we do work with Piedmont. What am I missing? What are some of the other, can you think?
I think that there's a lot within the metro that puts their 501(c)(3) so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Norman, Piedmont, Shawnee, Chichester, also one of our bigger ones.
Yeah.
So bottom line is, there's no fee until we get funds and put in your, at that time, that's where the fees start.
Correct.
We spend it all next month, there's zero again, we don't.
Mainly what we need to.
Question would be for Matt, and that is, from a legal standpoint, how does that fit our municipality?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
While he thinks about that. So you said that the, this organization was founded by Tom McCaslin?
Uh-huh.
That's who McCaslin Fieldhouse in Norman is named after, his family?
Yes, sir.
And G. Rainbolt?
Yes.
Okay, G. Rainbolt is a fraternity brother of mine from the Sigma Nu chapter of OU.
David?
Obviously founded Bank First, which was.
Yeah, that's right.
Your, your loyalty to using Bank First as advisors.
Mm-hmm, yeah. David, you're, you're not old enough to be Gene's.
No, not that I meant the gentleman.
Oh, okay, okay.
Prior to, prior to his, prior to his passing.
No disrespect. No, Gene is still.
Yeah, Gene's still alive.
Oh.
I, I said G.E. Rainbolt, his father.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. No, G.E. is still alive.
Wait a minute, well, which one died?
Which one?
Nobody.
I could have sworn, no, are you sure about that?
I'm sure.
No, I read something and they, no, that's not correct.
G.E. Rainbolt is Gene Rainbolt.
Okay, go ahead and let Matt answer.
Well, no, 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 no. Scott, it's H.E. Rainbolt.
H.E. Rainbolt.
Is Gene Rainbolt.
You're Gene.
Yeah. Now David is more your contemporary.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I mean, I've met both of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Fraternity houses, 25.
No, don't. Don't scare me like that. Gene is.
Sorry, Dave.
He's not, he's fine. He's fine!
In other words, they're very well back.
Yes.
Okay, and that's where Bank First comes into play.
Right. But H.E. and Gene are the same people.
H.E. and Gene are the same person, okay, okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so now we know that David's, David's alive, continue on with your questioning.
I'm sorry.
So, can you be a little more specific, but?
Well, is there a downside legally for us to do this?
No, I mean, my understanding of the way that communities use these is to get access to extra funds that the city itself can't get to. It becomes a form of a public partner, private partnership where, yes, they are a separate legal entity, but you're working collaboratively together for the betterment of the community. So your involvement in it is.
Okay.
I will say that what the idea is, is playing out in Laverne right now because they have somebody on staff with the town of Laverne that does grant writing, but they're needing that 501(c)(3), so they've partnered with their community foundation that was already established there. They're wanting to do some improvements to their parks, the splash pad, things like that. And that's where we can help come in with that 501(c)(3) umbrella for truly town-wide community.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say, is basically all we need you for is your 501(c)(3). Since we have Mr. Weber.
Nothing personal.
Nothing personal.
Nothing personal.
At least that's the start of the relationship.
We get it, yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. We've got our contact information for the three of us is on the last page, so just, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right, so how are you all feeling about, go ahead and having them be our community foundation? Or do you all want to think about it a little bit more, just now that this is another tool in our tool chest that we can have? Jim?
What I, what I've heard and what I've just looked at, what, a little bit, I've had a little background on them, but it's not costing us anything to do anything with them. It gives us access to go after monies that we can't get anyways.
Correct.
So it was an opportunity to come in and go after those monies. If we get it, it's a parking spot, it's going to cost us, but it's a win-win situation.
Well, one, one question for you. Are the fees paid from the funds that are invested or are the fees paid directly by the city?
Fees are paid from the funds that are invested, funds that are, that we hold.
Okay. And I just wanted to get that clarified, because if it was the other way around, then it, until you have money in it.
There's no advance fee, there's, the, the city does not write us a check. The fees come, yes, from the funds that we are holding.
Okay, I, I assumed as much, but never make assumptions.
Good to clarify.
Always good for clarification.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve having a community foundation being one of our partners.
I'll second that. Go ahead.
Mayor.
Yay.
Evans.
Yes.
Buntheir.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Morris.
Yay.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you so much for coming and we'll be in touch very soon. Thank you so much. All right, item number six, final public hearing, discussion of possible action on a use subject to review concerning the private school or college with or without dormitory facilities located at 5601 Northos Expressway, applicant Mark Julian.
Applicant is present.
Is that the Hertz building?
Yes, ma'am. And we'll go ahead and get staff real quick.
Mark, we're going to have Dakota start.
Yeah, give us a rundown real quick.
Sorry, I, I told him just to stand up here with me, but either way.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a application for Dove Schools. This is in C4 zoning, so this is listed as a special use permit or special use upon review. The stipulation was made at the planning commission that there would be pre-K through 12 at this site with no dormitories. And we have also requested that the applicant provide a traffic impact assessment, and that is pending, but they're working with their engineer to get that done.
If I can speak to a couple of things. The traffic study would be not as conditioned on the approval of the use, but on the condition, if it is approved, of them moving forward with construction, pulling permits and whatnot. As a quick summary, I know a couple of you were at planning commission, but I'll try and summarize for you what we learned at the planning commission. This is not moving the existing school, this is more of an expansion of their operations into War Acres, but maybe a little bit of an expansion overall for their operations, but it's going, would it be fair to say a consolidation from other locations to the Hertz building? There'd be a portion of the students that are at the existing location just to the east that would move over to the new location. But, and he, he can fill in the blanks of the exact grades, but they would still keep the other location open with maybe 1 through 4 or K through, you, you can speak, speak to that. But as Dakota said, and I wanted to highlight this point, just because it highlights what we're doing on things like this, while there's a particular applicant in front of you, you're approving a use, not a user. That's why the planning commission added the, recommends to you that there be a condition on the approval, that it be up to 12th grade and that there be no dormitories. Because if you just approved it without a stipulation like that, then if Dove sold the property in a couple of years, a college could open there. So you're approving a school, not Dove. Dove just happens to be the one that wants to open the school there. So I'm trying to think if there was anything else of substance that came up. There is going to be a field just to the north. We talked about whether or not there'd be outdoor activities after hours, football, soccer, things like that. The plan is only for during the day, not playground, but for PE-type activities and a track around it, but no football field, no soccer. We talked a little bit about ingress and egress, and he can go into more detail, but some of the students would, the drop-off would be in the front of the building and another portion of the students, it would be in the back of the building. Is there anything else that, of note from the planning commission? Just figured if we, if we hit some of those for, for the two that were there, you guys got to hear all this, but the rest of you didn't get to hear some of this.
There was also that the, the elementary will stay where they're at.
Correct. I forget the exact rates, but the elementary will stay there, the middle school will come over, and then there'll be kids from other communities or other schools that Dove has, that they'll be consolidating over to this location.
And also, there are plenty of parking spaces, so there's not a concern about that. That's good.
So by the, the other day, there are lots.
It's like over 800, I think, is what he said.
And for anyone who wasn't at the planning commission or heard, Dove Schools, the parents come and pick the, take, bring the children and drop them off, there are no school buses. So they bring them in the morning, pick them up in the afternoon, and then, and there's a trickle of children that get picked up from 3 to 6, I believe it is, that stay after school, but not very many.
And I did ask, just to make sure, even though it would seem kind of absurd, there will not be migration of students from that property to the east.
Right.
Coming over to the other side for gym or anything like that. Wouldn't be the smartest idea to trounce a bunch of kids across the parking lot in the street, but that's, elementary will stay over here, and I think you can speak to this, but that they already have a partnership with the church there to use their gym facilities for the elementary. So there's a download of, sort of, the summary of what planning commission got to hear for your benefit.
Thank you so much. Mark?
Yes, I'm Mark Julian, Assistant Superintendent of Dove Schools, and that was all the details that I had. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer or clarify any of that.
Do we need to open up a public meeting?
Entirely up to the council. Sometimes it's good to get, when we have less clear proposals, to get some detail before opening the public hearing, so the public can hear that and maybe get their questions answered. But this one's pretty detailed and.
Gotcha, okay. Well, and one thing I'd like for you to clarify is, how does this benefit the students of War Acres, specifically the families here with Dove expansion?
Yeah, we talked about that. Since we moved, 2020 is when we first started, in relation for the elementary, which then expanded to add an elementary and a middle school, the number of War Acres students and Putnam City students has increased each year. We even changed our policy so that we, our first priority in our lottery, we're a lottery school, as all charter schools are required by law to be. So if there's 25 spots and 25 students apply, they all get in. If there are 25 spots and 26 students apply, there is a lottery for those students. Once they're accepted, they never have to go in that lottery again, as long as their attendance, discipline, and they're passing their grades, they're guaranteed a spot all the way through graduation. But we did add, our first priority in that lottery, that's a weighted lottery, is if you're a child of a staff member that's been hired already, you have a higher weight in the lottery. Second is if you are a sibling of a student that's already been accepted. And I said this at the planning committee, not if five students all apply together from one family, there's no benefit, but if one of them gets in, the next year, the other four would have a benefit, and we see that a lot. So we have a very high percentage of siblings and families, which is why the number of cars that will be arriving is nowhere near the number of students. But the third priority is anybody that lives in War Acres around the building or is in the Putnam City School District. So this last year, for example, just the schools that are there and the school that we plan on moving have a wait list, I'm sorry, 1,200 applications. And, sorry, I wanted to get this correct. 400 of them are from Putnam City. So we're at about 30, 30-something percent, yeah, 1,270, and 401 of them are from Putnam City. So the, the Putnam City District and the War Acres students and families are finding our school, they're lining up for it. This expansion is, is led directly by demand. We have parents, it's heartbreaking when we do a lottery and we're only accepting eight spots and there's 300 spots. That's pre-K, that's K, that's first, that's second grade. Once they come, they rarely leave unless the family moves away, something like that. And so when that spot opens, we accept a student, anybody who's on the waiting list throughout the year automatically gets that spot. And then November, we'll start taking new applications for our new lottery in February.
Are there 1,200 children for this coming year?
Applicants. We don't have the spots for them, but that's just how many.
How many do you have spots for?
We'll have, well, I don't know the vacancies, we've already filled them, so there are currently no vacancies for the upcoming year.
How many kids?
There'll be, at the middle school, there are 300, at the elementary, there are 400. The high school that we mentioned, so what, just to back up a second, the elementary and middle school are already there. We're just going to move that middle school across the street and allow that elementary to then have more space, so there's a lower elementary side and an upper elementary side. Then the middle school will be across the street at the, the new property. And then we're going to move our high school, which is the first campus we opened in Oklahoma City back in 2002. That's on Northwest 23rd Street, and there are about 400 students there. They will come over, and the new building will be middle school and high school. So it's kind of one-stop shopping for our families.
This school year or?
Net, 25, 26, yeah.
I was going to say, I didn't think you'd do it that fast.
No, 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 we can't do it that fast.
And then, and then also, oh, sorry. Also, I was just going to say that you guys are bringing over your administration that way eventually.
Yeah, we're going to move our district office. We also have a statewide virtual school that we're going to move those offices into that. I mean, it's a, it's a huge property. So we're going to, we'll be moving our high school, our, relocating our high school, relocating our current North Middle School, leaving our elementary, but then we'll also bring our district offices and our statewide virtual staff to that location as well. Now that, no students come to that, it's not a hybrid, it's no brick and mortar. They just passed state law that the students don't have to test in person anymore. just passed state law that the students don't have to test in person anymore, so they'll be able to test virtually, so there won't be any large amounts of virtual students ever coming to that building. Mark, you ran over the numbers at planning commission, but if you don't mind running over here, the existing enrollment at the existing location, what the anticipated enrollment is, day one at the new location, and how many of those are the same kids just moving across the street? And then what your ultimate goal is for enrollment? Yeah, currently, there are 400 elementary students, 300 middle school students, we're going to move the middle school students across the street, and we're gonna bring over an additional 400 from our high school. So for that first year, 25, 26, in the new building, there would be about 750 students. 300 of which are already coming to War Acres for school, they're just gonna go to a new location. Correct, right. And then we would, we grow slowly once we do that, so, I mean, we're bringing over a large chunk, but then it's, you know, as we expand, it won't be until the 28, 29 school year that we would hit then our max capacity of 975, and then we would not expand beyond that. So 675 new students coming to War Acres? It's about 500, I had it about, sorry, I did, after you asked me last time, I think it's about 500, it's about 550 are new students that we expect in addition, into that location area at all. We also, we did start, since there was talk of a traffic, a traffic impact analysis, we've been talking with TEC and Johnson Associates and CEC about what that would bring over, and already they've got us doing our own research about how many of those are siblings. So, for example, of the current 774 students, 750 students already, that's down to 500 that would, that are not siblings. We're 30% siblings now, and as soon as we open these new spots, it's highly likely that they're all going to be siblings, because these are students that would be able to get in if we had spots available, but because we don't, they're just on the waiting list waiting to get in. That's not counting our carpool program, we offer that as well, and then although we currently don't offer buses, because we don't receive transportation funding, we are applying for that next year. Our plan is that although we wouldn't do a traditional bus route where we pick them up from anywhere, we would set locations that we could then send a bus to pick them up and bring them. That would also cut down on traffic. Most of our students are dropped off, we estimate that our full staff at full capacity and all of our drivers, there still would be less than 300. We have it at about 280 expected people to park on that parking lot, which has over 800 spots at full capacity.
What are the school hours, may I ask?
Yeah, we, our day starts, our formal day is from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, but we do a morning program, it's called Honeybee, it's a before and after care program for parents that have to go to work, they can drop their kids off as early as 6:00, and they can pick their kids up as late as 6:00 PM. There's not a lot of participation in that, it's as needed, sometimes it's based on employment or a car issue, but we also stagger our times, and that's been a convenience for parents, so, because right now, the high school kids are on 23rd and Classon, and then you have elementary here, and so we already stagger it. We expanded in Tulsa last year, and we staggered it as well, 10, 15, 20, and we can go as much as 30 and still not affect our staffing as far as their contracts go.
I have a question, will Hertz still utilize some of the building?
Hertz would remain in the building, because it's their server, it's their global server, so they, we've agreed that if this closes, which would close, if this is approved, then this would close in August, they would stay in the building through December. The servers might stay through January, but at January 31st, no, they're vacating, yeah. So Hertz would not be there, there would be no other businesses there, we're not renting any of it, we would occupy the full space.
You'll be purchasing?
Yes, we are purchasing.
I know that Dove Academy bought the Hertz building, and do you also own the land that the building sits on, or does that still belong to Hertz?
No, we have not purchased it yet, that's what we're in the process of, but if this, if you all approve this and we do buy, we would own the entire parcel. Legally, the building and the land are all considered the real property, so you don't buy the building, you buy the land. We're buying it all, we're not leasing any of it.
Yeah, well, it's not a land lease either, they have land leases here, but it's not a land lease.
Yeah, no, we're purchasing the full parcel, and we clarified in the planning committee, the, I don't know what you call that, the area at the very back in the north end of it, that's Oklahoma City, so we would not be doing anything with that, that would stay as is. If you look at your zoning map, you'll see a weird little cutout there, it's property, it's owned by Oklahoma City, I'm sure they're leasing it to OGN for electrical. I don't know, we like it, it's privacy, it's a barrier at the back, we want to keep it.
It's like, we got that one place down 50th, and it just kind of comes up and out, and then goes, you know, it's kind of odd.
Yeah, like two lots.
Yeah, two lots, just like they liked us to...
Somebody back in the day, somebody at Power that be back in the day when they did the annexation must have owned that lot.
Do the, do the high school kids get out first or the elementary kids?
It depends, normally, we do the high school first to clear the parking, in Tulsa, I say normally, the last time that we did this, we let the high school students get out first, so they could take their siblings, as long as they're not missing more than that 15 minutes of the last class, then they've attended the majority of that last hour, it's not affecting their attendance, and so we would allow high school students who have siblings to leave, and that opens it up. But as they said in the summary, we're not gonna use the same points of egress. High school students will be entering off Northwest Expressway at the stoplight.
And will any high school students be driving their own cars?
Yeah, we do have some students that drive, it's a very low number, we do serve a high poverty rate, that, the highest we've ever seen, the number of students drive is 50% and that's generous. And even then, when they drive, they often drive, they carpool, they drive with their friends, they arrive with their siblings.
Okay, is there any chance that Hertz is gonna back out of this deal, or is it a firm commitment that they are gonna sell the building if we do approve this?
Oh, yes, the building was for sale before, we didn't approach them, we found it for sale and loved the location, loved the property, they're selling no matter what, whether it's to us or somebody else, but yeah, if this is approved, we're in the middle of due diligence, so we're doing our inspections, our ALTA surveys, everything is going on now, the biggest question mark is the...
What I heard is that if you bought the building, that Hertz would lease it back from you until the school started.
Well, it's not until the school starts, I think right now, the agreement is they lease it back from us through January at the latest, until they're able to pack up the servers and go from there. And I can probably address what could be a concern, when you're asked to approve things like this, if you approve it and they don't take advantage of the approval, if they don't commence that use within 12 months, the approval goes away. Yeah. So you might remember the granite shop that was in front of you a month or two ago, the whole reason they came back before you is because they had not, had not taken advantage of the approval from the past, and so after 12 months, it was lost. So if they decided, if Hertz came to them with sweetheart deal to lease it, and they decide that was good for them, if you approved it tonight, July of next year, if they had not established the school or got working on the school, the approval goes away.
Okay, since we're approving a school, not Dove Academy.
Right.
You said something about 975 maximum students is what you're looking at, but we're approving any school, not just you. What is the maximum capacity that you would request that we approve for that facility?
It's a great question, I don't know, until we work with our permitting and we send it out, what it will hold, I know that, I mean, there's two separate buildings, the high school's gonna be in one, the middle school's going to be in the other one, we've not looked at anything beyond that. I know the building will hold way more than that, but that has not been...
That's my, that's my question.
Yeah, that, this would be, this last largest, what's that?
Fire code?
Yeah, I mean, we won't, it's gonna be dictated by fire code. The same thing happened at our last, the building that we have, it can hold a lot more students than we currently have in it, we just don't put more students in it. That's one of the things that we do is low student teacher ratio and small classroom size.
But I'm assuming that you'll continue to expand this location just like you had the others?
No, no, I mean, the plan is, I mean, like, we're not trying to expand that current building beyond what it can hold or beyond what that plan was, we're not, this is the most growth that we've done in a while because of the demand, and it's led by the recent performance, report cards have come out, a lot of people are upset with, you know, school of choice that's available to them. This middle school that's currently there is ranked the number one middle school in the state, it's ranked highly nationally, our high school that's gonna be coming over is one of the top high schools in the state every year since it's been open in 2002, so that, as that information gets released, people are now reaching out to us and they're applying, we don't have the spots, this is our plan to expand up to 975, and all my notes I have after worth of 975, it stays 975 from 28, 29, 29, 30, 30, 31, 31, 32, we're, I mean, as far as we can plan out, and I can't speak for who would be here when I'm gone or 10 years from now, but no, there's not a plan to...
So if we put a limit of 1,000 on it right now, it wouldn't hinder you?
Wouldn't not be a problem for us.
So with the additional room that you're speaking of, is there ever an opportunity that you would bring the elementary school into that?
No, no, we own, we own the building across the street.
Oh, you do?
And all of our buildings that we own, we've been in, we don't move normally, I mean, in Tulsa, we did, the building that we first started in Tulsa in 2001 was a converted church, we had it onto it, it was falling apart, it was on Admiral and Memorial, it was a very rough neighborhood, parents were asking us to relocate, so we relocated and consolidated, same thing, the building that's on 23rd Street and Classon has been there forever, it was a nightclub, it was a Gold's Gym, it was all these other things, we're just, it doesn't work for us for a high school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Koi, I got a question, so talking about, do you know what the ratio is of square footage per student or anything like that?
It's all dependent on fixed seating or open areas, it could be 15 feet, 15 square feet per student, or it could be seven square feet per student, and that is a humongous building, so.
Yeah.
It hasn't changed its occupancy in so long, it's over 25 years ago, so it would take a lot of time and a lot of math.
Yeah, okay.
I've got one more question.
Yeah, please.
That's about the queuing for the cars, you've got a huge parking lot, as you said, whether you're gonna utilize half of it, and a lot of driveway coming in, do you have any plans to control the queuing for the pickup to keep them from backing up onto the streets?
Yes.
That we're experiencing at every other school in the city?
Right, right, no, I mean, again, at the first week of school, at every school that I've ever seen, public-private charter, there's a little, the parents going the wrong way, not knowing, sometimes it's a bit, but no, we queue them through the parking lots, so they snake around, we have staff that are out directing them, we'll re-strite as necessary for that, not the parking spaces, but the entrances, all the points of egress, yeah.
Re-strive things so that they can see.
Yeah, our biggest thing that we do at all of our campuses is we get them off the streets as fast as possible, whether they have a delay, pickup, weather's bad, the delay is in our property, not outside of our property.
And they send instructions to the parents on how to pick up their kids?
We send maps, we do a training, we do an orientation, if there's ever a change for any kind of an emergency or something like that, a wreck, they always have a backup plan that we send out, so that they know today will be a different route.
I haven't heard any complaints from the elementary school, but again, we're gonna have a lot more vehicles.
I had said the last time too, that Hertz, Teresa Moody, their building manager, said that they're nowhere near their capacity, but they had been occupying at 700 to 800 people, all driving, all parking, so, I mean, we're not, we're not gonna have, we're gonna have around that as far as what's coming, but nowhere near, I don't know what their capacity was at their highest point, but that's what they've been running.
Very cool. So this is a question for Pam, for you, do the high school students get to leave for lunch?
No, we're a closed campus.
Well, parents do, so that's fine.
Yep. We've always been a closed campus, our staff do, and they eat all over the place, we love War Acres, and we love the location.
And that's 280 staff total, right?
Yeah, we do not let students leave. If we do, it's a, it's a field trip, and we partnered with, you know, Incredible Pizza and Hideaway Pizza, and we'll go and bring food to them, people will deliver, but yeah, all of our campuses are closed campuses for students.
That's right, both of those are War Acres, that's fine.
Are we ready to open a public hearing?
Yeah.
And then I want to make one other note real quick, so one of the reasons, the superintendent came to me some time ago and asked about this plan, because they were a large family foundation, saw the work that Dove Academy was doing, and how well they're doing nationally as well as in our state, and that was the conversation, they wanted to see if we would make sure to be a good partner for the school to come and do this, so doing part of the due diligence, I know, I mean, you guys are probably under 120-day, probably due diligence with an LOI, so, all right, so with that, I will take a motion for entering a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Evans?
Yes.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Hey.
Douglas?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Ms. Schmidt.
All right, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? With that, oh, you are public, sir. Could you please state your name and your address?
Mike Schmidt, 6008 Northwest 58 Terrace. If this school was going to be on like 45th and Grove, I'd be for it. Pam just said at the beginning, revenue's down, expenses are up, you're gonna give away a prime location for business on Northwest Highway to a school, you're not gonna get any revenue from this. So I would like you to think about, would you rather have a business there and try to get a business in there, or a school that they already have another location that they're taking business away from that could be a business? It was a service merchandise back in the day, and it's gonna, that's a school, so you're gonna lose all that income because you've got a school there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, how long has the Hertz building been for sale?
It just came up.
Yeah, we found it in November, December, is when we first found it, and they were asking for more than we could afford, they kept lowering their price, there were no takers, it finally got to where we could afford it with the funding that we had available.
Do we know why Hertz is leaving? Anybody know that? Yeah?
Remote working?
Well, that's what my assumption is.
During our annual inspection, that is what the individual that walked us around the facility indicated, was that the percentage of employees has reduced greatly in-house because of the amount of remote or telework that's available after the pandemic.
Well, and when you consider the fact that rental cars all across the country are down just because of the rise of Uber and everything else from people leaving airports, so the need for a worldwide reservation center has started to minimize itself.
Yeah. Well, and I know one of the, to kind of, one of my views with this being an asset to our city in regards to tax revenue is because, do we need to shut the public hearing?
Eventually.
Okay, all right.
Is anybody else?
So there's different philosophies on how we do things, so do you bring enough people in, or you take enough people out, you know, do they spend enough money here, or do they leave? So this is something that never dawned on me until after Pam was talking to me about how much we're down, and basically, the amount of money that we're down is about $3.5 million in spending. That's how much that is. Whenever we're talking about our overall budget, we're anywhere from $225 million to $250 million. That means that there is no way or chance that our citizens come anywhere close to providing the price of purchasing power to fund this city. I don't have a percentage, we got 900 and something thousand that come through every month, plus or minus. The more people we bring in to drop their money off, drop their kids off, Starbucks is across the street, McDonald's is across the street, Andy's is in that parking lot, Slim Chicken's in that parking lot, the bank's over there, Incredible Pizza, Hideaway, it's all on that side. So it's not necessarily that we need another big business, because lord knows that, I mean, it probably had to be, I can tell you the malls are going away, and that is a massive building. So the philosophy is, how do we bring the most people into our town, drop money and leave?
Matt, you and I spoke last week, and that is, because they're zoned, what they're zoned, there's nothing we can do to stop the sale anyway.
The only reason they're coming for you is because this is a use that the city elders determine needed to be reviewed before the person can simply engage in it. There are countless uses that, so they could purchase this property and engage in that don't produce tax revenue. Some big corporation wanted to move their corporate headquarters here, that it was just office work, well, it's Hertz 2.0. The question here is not about tax revenue or not tax revenue, you already approve a a host of uses that don't generate tax revenue here. The, uh, question when approving a use on review is not, will this generate tax revenue? The question is limited to how it impacts adjacent properties. There, there's an easy way to think of how this could potentially have an adverse impact, move it across the street. Hotel closes, they buy the Golden Corral property, they buy the hotel, and they're backing up to a residential neighborhood. You can start to see where some of the questions would come in about ingress and egress, lighting, noise, and how that can impact the adjacent areas. But the purpose of uses on review is not, we want sales tax. The purpose is, if done badly, this could adversely impact adjacent properties, particularly residential properties. The, the diversity of uses decision was made when the ordinance was adopted. They're compliant with the ordinance, they're compliant with the comprehensive plan. And there really haven't been any discussions here or at the planning commission that have called into question the impact this would have, with the exception of a potential on traffic, uh, which has already been addressed, uh, by Dakota and MART, in terms of, as part of the building permit process, they're gonna be required to submit a traffic impact study.
Tribby?
You know, we already have an empty building on Expressway right now, and that's the Golden Corral.
Right.
It's been sitting vacant now for how long, at least?
Years.
Are we a year? Are we a year?
I think we're four years in.
Way past that.
Four years since that's, that one shut down? I mean, we have a massive facility over here in Hertz that is going to soon be going dormant, however this goes down. Mike Schmidt's estimation is also correct. Those things have to be weighed equally. We haven't done, with whatever, with that building, uh, for Golden Corral over there, maybe they, you know, o- obviously during the pandemic, real estate prices just went through the absolute roof. I mean, I mean, that, that's obvious, anybody associated with any aspect of real estate knows that, but, I mean, we would have a massive building over there, unoccupied, putting in a private school with a very good reputation, could be a benefit in bringing people in, but I'll say this, you can't sell, you can't have enough pizza parties to generate the sales tax revenue that we're looking for. You can't sell enough lattes at Starbucks to generate the sales tax revenue that we're looking for with the parents waiting on their kids to get out of school. So, it's either, it's kinda like, we, we're blanked if we do, or blanked if we don't. It's, it's a fifty-fifty shot, because, I mean, like, like I said, Golden Corral's empty, and we haven't done anything to try to get that thing filled.
Well, the fact that this was not a tax revenue generating property to start with.
Right, it never, it never was. You're not losing revenue, but you're occupying a building, and like, like, uh, Anderson, Chief Anderson said, was it nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand rolled through last month? Is that what the number was? And we have no idea how many of them are stopping anywhere within War Acres for ten minutes at a time.
That is correct.
It's, it's whatever, you know?
And that's, and those figures don't include Northwest Highway.
And they don't include Northwest Highway, that just includes the main arteries coming in off of, uh, MacArthur and Fiftieth and that type of thing.
Yeah, and I will make mention, actually, we did have a, a commercial realtor actually reach out to us to get plans for the Golden Corral.
Good, anything to get that, that ice work fixed up.
They changed brokers, thank you, Jesus.
Okay. That helps.
That helped a lot. 'Cause some advertise, some don't.
But, but like you said, I, I will, Ma- Mayor Godwin, I will agree with you, malls are going away. The first one, the, no, obviously, I mean, we've s- we've seen what happened to, uh, Shepherd.
Mm-hmm.
We've seen what's happened to Crossroads. Crossroads is, that, that's a joke. And the next mall that that's going to happen to will be Quell Springs. Penn will probably survive because of all the development around it.
Yeah.
But Quell Springs is not going to survive. Eventually, it's going to be gone too, and that's too bad, because you can get, get what you need there and get out pretty quickly, but, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have buildings that are going to be empty, that could be go to some type of philanthropic use or educational use, so we, you know, probably just need to take all that under consideration. But like he said, it was never zoned appropriately in the first place.
It was never being used.
Never used appropriately in the first place.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Who's second?
Judy.
Judy.
I thought it was, but I'm not sure. Evans?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Ms. Puth.
All right. Is there any other, uh, discussion that would like to be had before?
I'll make a motion to approve the use subject to review.
Second it.
That with the stipulations?
To clarify, you have the recommendations from the commission, which are up K through twelve.
Yes.
No dormitories, and you had had some discussion about caps on students, which wasn't something that came.
Was a thousand.
And so, are you wanting to include the two conditions from planning commission plus the?
Yes.
Thousand? Okay.
Planning commission recommendations plus the popular, or the enrollment limit.
So, for council's clarification, it would be a motion to approve this special use permit with restrictions, nothing above twelfth grade, no dormitories, and a thousand student cap, which would mean if they wanted to expand beyond a thousand, they would just have to come back to apply to, you know, to remove that restriction.
What about the traffic review?
That's, that's administrative, part of the administrative review, for the building permits and whatnot.
Okay. I had written that down.
So I second it, as you guys just previously made the motion.
Evans?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Prince? Douglas?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay, yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Mayor?
Resounding yay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, item number seven, information item on street repairs performed since two-thousand-two. Mister Chairman? Mike Schmidt? We need it, we need another, we need the clicker, click.
Mouse? Photos? Did I bore you the first time?
Why'd they pay you the big bucks, Mike? Why'd they pay you the big bucks?
Are we into this?
We'll talk about that.
Mike, will you bring me one of those tomorrow?
Yeah, it's on that, is it on the E? Should be the bottom, it says War Acres Utilities. Yep.
Will you bring me one tomorrow?
Diskey.
I packed it.
We'll see how it goes.
Top, top right, Diskey.
This one?
No, go to the right, that one. Down at the very bottom.
So which slide do you want me to start?
Yep, go down past the... Go back up a couple. Right there.
The stuff that he's gonna talk about.
Why? Bringing everybody on?
For on this next one.
So, what does your Public Works Department do? It basically consists of, uh, five people and streets and parks. Uh, so we'll start out with, with some repairs that we've done in the recent past, the last couple of years. This is between CVS and Zaccabees. Uh, there was a storm drain pipe, you can kinda see it down here in the, right here, that had failed, the road was sinking, so we went in and repaired the road. We started this repair on a Monday, we called in the Okilocate, got our, uh, traffic control devices, um, removed the old, uh, metal pipe, purchased new pipe from, uh, Nance out at Piedmont, uh, prepared the pipe, set it back in place, and repatch in four days.
Wow.
So, um, if this was probably hired out, it would probably be a, a month-long project, five thousand dollars for engineers to do plans. Uh, we did it in four days, we had the road back open. Uh, we were trying to beat the overlay, which they overlaid it here a couple months later, so we put down the asphalt, obviously, for traffic, but they came in and overlaid, we didn't wanna come in after they put down the nice overlay and cut all that out. Uh, this is our Charleston's, uh, pipe, we had a, on the, the, uh, ingress there, uh, a collapse, a hole actually formed in the road, so soil over time, uh, is carried by water, it trickles down through this crack right here in the pipe, so the crack was cleaned out and repaired. This was done by our street departments in about two days, three days. We had them back up and operational. Uh, this is just south of the library on Norman. Uh, this portion here failed and was allowing these, uh, storm grates, which go all the way across the street, to, uh, to start sinking. The lip was a little bit shallow, and, and the corners were breaking off, so we cut all that out and poured some new concrete lip, and a new, a new, uh, concrete surface here for the grating. This was about a two-week project. You're welcome. This is off of, uh, Old Street, just south of Fifty-Eight, between two houses, there's a storm drain that drains and goes to the west to the Creek Channel. This was probably about a three-day project, it's fairly deep, uh, it had metal pipe and it had corroded, and it created sinkholes in this residential yard. Uh, this is at Fifty-Sixth and, uh, MacArthur. And, uh, back to the west, uh, there was an area that held water all the time, so the residents complained about it, so we came in and put about a hundred-and-fifty-foot of a plastic pipe in, we dug the trench and did all the locates and everything. That was probably about a week, a week-long project. Here before you, uh, I made a, a pamphlet for you. This is actually, uh, the overlay of Fiftieth Street in front of the high school. This is about twenty-fifteen. Uh, it all began after two thousand and eight, after the sales tax increase was approved, uh, Mayor Woolley came aboard, uh, we compiled a list of road repairs, and that will be, we're kinda starting from the rear of your book here. So, in two thousand and nine, Mayor Woolley, the council, members of the time, planning commissioners, uh, legacy engineer, myself, we all sat down and came up with this list. Then in twenty nineteen, there was a geo-bond, this list was taken, and you can see that the, uh, green and yellow in Ward's one, the green are the completed streets, yellow were the streets that were not completed for, uh, items taken off this list. Uh, the same for Ward Two, we've got Norman, Hammond, so forth, Redmond. Uh, we did have Fifty-Eighth later on was overlaid before the school opened up. Ward Three, we did some streets in Ward Three, uh, which included the South MacArthur Project, a part of Forty-Sixth Street, uh, part of Grove. Uh, we did take out right here, there was a, a wellhead in the center of the street, we were able to get that removed, and, uh, straightened the street out, and we actually cleaned up that area and expanded our two parks there. This is at, uh, Fifty-Sixth and Redmond, the two small parks there.
Yeah.
So we actually, uh, increased the size of those two parks and put up fencing.
Yeah, okay, I know where that's at.
Yeah. Ward Four, uh, a large portion was the South MacArthur Project, we did part of Saint Charles and, uh, Forty-Sixth Street. So these are the future street repairs that were left from the list from twenty nineteen, so those are in your pamphlet, you can read those. These are the completed streets, which are in green, which are also in your pamphlet. Uh, these are completed streets, major streets that we've done since two thousand and two, so, uh, the map was kinda big, so I had to break it up into portions. So the Northwest Expressway, uh, was overlaid, we had MacArthur, pretty much was overlaid during A R R A funds from the Obama administration. Uh, we have Sixty-third here, that again was the A R R A, uh, funds that overlaid that. This was stretched between Sixty-third and Fiftieth, was done under Tarte Bono. Uh, this was one of the, uh, four street, residential street repairs that was performed by, uh, Mayor Woolley, which was, uh, this is Fifty-Ninth Street. We also did Harmon, uh, so this is Ward Two, Ward Three, and we, uh... Okay, moving down, we had Fiftieth Street overlaid, we had Ann Arbor was done in two-thousand-two, we had a section of street over here, uh, and MacArthur. Uh, one thing here in red is, if, uh, it is still owned by the, um, ODOT, so if you do decide to adopt this, uh, I didn't make it to calculate the actual square footage, but from Sixty-third, which is about a million dollars, so you can get, this is six lanes, so if you do adopt, it has a, what they call superpay, which is kind of a one-inch overlay, um, and it, there's, it's starting to show signs of de-bonding. Uh, this is just a, a summary of all those, uh, projects that were on that map, starting, uh, back in two thousand and two, and I tried the best, uh, available information to show the type of work, the project costs, the War Acres funds. So you can see at the bottom, War Acres has spent about three-point-nine millions out of general, or out of CIP funds and general fund, and, uh, with, and eleven-point-nine million in, uh, federal funds. John Evans had mentioned Sixty-third was rough, and he was now, what, you're traveling down Fiftieth now? Mueller and going south to Fifty? Any other way? So, so I kinda con- It's not that bad. It's not that bad, you need better shots. Anyway, so this is just to give you a cost for, uh, this would be, uh, west from MacArthur to, uh, Mueller, this'll give you a kind of a cost here with our budget upcoming, uh, this, this would actually consume all of our CIP budget for, for a year. Uh, this would be going east from Sixty-third from MacArthur, um, this'll give you a cost estimate there, the north half going from west from Grove, or the south, the south portion going west from Grove is actually Oklahoma City, so it's a little bit less square feet. Recently, the intersection at, uh, Sixty-third and MacArthur was painted, which, uh, turned out really nice, so, uh, two thousand and eight was when MacArthur was, uh, overlaid, and it's showing s- the same signs of wear, which, that's when Sixty-third was put in, so this kinda gives you a cost estimate for the upcoming budget, we could consider about thirty thousand dollars to do all the various markings, arrows, and so forth. And that's all I've got, so.
Awesome.
So this gives us a little things, things to think about here for the budget upcoming, and you can look through to see what we've done.
Fantastic, thank you, Mike. I think we all like a lot of information. All right, um, discussion, uh, item number eight, discussion of possible action on re-roofing and repair decking, off its pergolas at Cherokee Hills, Frankwood, Junior Park, Cherokee Hills Bathroom. If any of y'all have been to those, we need to, um, get them re-roofed.
I do wanna say real quick, that'd be asked, and I missed putting it on there, but there is money in the CIP budget that was budgeted for parks.
Yeah, and also carryover from last year, I think, too.
Yeah, we didn't get it done.
Yeah, we didn't get it done, so.
Do we have an estimate?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Basically have, uh, four estimates, there's three that are composition roofing, one is metal roofing that was done maybe a year, year and a half ago, which probably the pricing has increased, but, um, that particular vendor, we had fifty thousand dollars, and they, they bid right at, I think, just short of fifty thousand. Somehow they always hone in on, on that number, so it's, if you have fifty thousand, it's forty-nine-nine-ninety-nine, so. So, uh, hopefully y'all looked at your packet, uh, there was three companies, the company that I liked was the, uh, Moody and Foster, uh, and you can see the pictures here of the condition of the various three structures, they're not terrible, but if we don't do something, they're just gonna deteriorate further, and it's gonna just cost more to repairs. Mike, wouldn't it be cheaper to just put metal on them and be done with it? Put metal? You, you could, it's, it's, it's more cost, I mean, um... That's where you guys decide, how much money do you wanna spend? Uh, the standing seam is, is the most expensive route, um, the comp, the comp, the, uh, comp roof is kind of a compromise, it gets, uh, as you can see, some of the woodwork needs to be replaced, some of the decking needs to be replaced. This would be like an architectural-type shingle, uh, that you could put on there, it won't be the three-tab, the three tabs are more susceptible to, uh, wind. We've also had, uh, Vandals, uh, get on top of the bathroom at the Cherokee Hills Park, and, uh, they practiced their de-shingling methods and so forth.
Did you get an estimate from M H M Roofing, that's in War Acres? War Acres Company on MacArthur?
Uh, I got the one over in Bethany, the All-American, and, uh, Roger had one, and then we had the, the leftover metal roofing from, uh, a year or two before, and then, uh, this particular Moody and Foster, she actually spent a lot of time and came out, so I was pretty impressed, uh, with what we talked about and what I thought we needed to do to bring these up to, uh, a more acceptable manner. So, decisions before you.
Pam, do we have nineteen thousand seven-seventy budgeted, where we can afford this right now? In CIP, and again from carryover?
We had a hundred-and-fifty thousand for parks, and fifty, I don't remember how much Connie's contract was, but that's coming out of there. But right now, there's nothing else that's coming out of that money, so this would be, this was something we knew we needed to do last year, and we didn't get it done, so.
May I also say something?
May I also say something? You guys approved the covered parking at the fire department. You guys approved $22,500. It was money that was carried over a couple of years. The firefighters did that work, and the total cost with welding, paint, and everything, the project's complete, was about $6,000. So, there is $16,500 that we didn't utilize in CIP money, so.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
So, to answer your question, if we needed to appropriate money for it, you'd have a budget amendment before you. This fits within existing appropriation.
And the Moody Foster, that covers all three, two pavilions and the restrooms.
Correct. And one of the things they used, like All-American, they liked OSB. Now, I like the plywood. So, when we talked, he didn't, I didn't actually meet him. He didn't want to come out. But Moody and Foster, we walked all the structures. She looked it over really good. I wanted plywood because I felt like it's a longer-lasting material. I wanted the decking replaced. I didn't want it to have a soft deck, and then the shingles pull off. One of the things that we'll do in the street department, we'll power wash the underneath of the Frank V. Wood Junior Park, and then we'll spray that with a new paint.
You mean the underside of the pergola?
Yeah, the underside of the pergola. There's just a few spots. The Cherokee Hills, it's kind of hard to see in the picture. Obviously, the roof deck, you can see this is actually OSB. That's why I don't like OSB. It deteriorates. There is an exterior OSB, but I'm just a plywood guy, so.
And also, we're waiting until we have this done. We actually have a church that has volunteered to paint the bathrooms whenever it's all done at the volunteer project. They bought the paint and everything. They're just waiting for us. Yeah. Yes.
What color?
It was kind of the same color that was already there, unless you want to do something different, so. Said they would buy the paint. I misspoke. Not buy the paint already. They say they will buy the paint. I mean, I thought hot paint would be fine, so.
If you were to tear them down and go with the full metal ones, which you kind of see in some of the newer parks around town, those things are expensive. You're probably looking 40, 50,000 apiece for a metal pergola that's all metal. I know, I can tell you that the Frank Wood, that is actually metal posts and heavy beams. It's pretty well-built, except for the roof decking. It has a tongue-in-groove, when you're looking up, it's a tongue-in-groove material. It's a five-quarters, which would be about an inch and a quarter. So, hopefully, I plan on, if there's any spot that needs to be replaced, is maybe having some custom milled and put in before they actually get to the roof deck.
Can I just say yay?
It's your decision.
These are well-needed. These have been in bad shape for quite a while, and they're just getting worse. So, I'm going to, I mean, are we ready for a motion?
I was just going to say one thing real quick. Director Turman, isn't it the same style throughout all the parks? So, if we changed something, it would be weird, wouldn't it?
Well, I think the roof color is different on all. I know it's different on the bathroom and Frank Wood. I think Frank Wood is a darker color. And then I think they use kind of a white three-tab on the Cherokee Hills, but they're going to use an architectural shingle, which is a laminated shingle. So, it has less chance of flipping up. It has a tar strip on the bottom surface, and it's just a better material.
Thank you. Okay, sorry.
Anyone else?
Do we have any other options besides a comp shingle, a standard comp architectural shingle, or a metal standing seam? Is there anything else that's available to us in regards to options? Where even if, even if we paid, say, five grand more, it would last longer? Because, I mean, you know, all these manufacturers put, and I'm sure that the roofer can speak to this, they put 30-year warranties on these things. Man, welcome to Oklahoma. 30 years gets cut in half. I mean, let's get real. Between wind and sun and rain and snow, it gets cut in half. So, are there any additional options where we can maybe pay a little bit more and get longer durability and not have to face this thing down the road versus saying spending 50 grand on a metal standing seam that'll last for a very long time? Does the roofer have any options? Is she here this evening? Oh, wait a minute. She is. Roofer, would you please approach the bench? I was going to ask, an M-panel is another option.
I'm sorry?
M-panel. That's what I have on my roof. A metal M-panel roof.
I'm not familiar with an M-panel. Like an R-panel?
R-panel.
R-panel, a standing seam is actually better than an R-panel.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because the standing seam has.
Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Erica Moody, and I live at 1-8217 Hasselmeier Lane.
In what city?
Edmunds.
Okay. And you own what company?
I own Moody and Foster Roofing. I'm the owner of the company.
All right, go ahead.
So, to answer your question, or what you refer to what you were speaking to, an R-panel has exposed fasteners, whereas a standing seam has closed fasteners. And because of that, the extreme weather will cause an R-panel to leak at about five years typically if you don't maintain it. Whereas a standing seam is going to be, they crimp it, they crimp the panels, so that all the fasteners are hidden. And that way, it's going to last longer. I mean, it's a great roof, but it's significantly more expensive than a 30-year laminate shingle. The other piece that you had referred to was, is there an upgrade? I mean, we could potentially put a Class IV shingle on it. It's going to withstand up to two-inch hail versus an entry-level 30-year laminate, which is going to withstand like probably 1.25 to 1.5-inch hail. It's not a huge expense, but I mean, probably for that roof, I'm spitballing another couple thousand dollars, maybe on top of what the estimate that I provided. I mean, that is an option as well, but, you know, 30-year laminate's a great shingle. It's already going to be an upgrade on the bathroom. You have a three-tab. A laminate shingle is basically, they've taken two, three tabs, and they've laminated together. So, it's going to withstand hail better. It's going to withstand wind much better, and it's going to withstand people getting on the roof and tearing off shingles better. So, I did see that roof, and we spoke at length that day. I was with him for probably over an hour that day, looking at all the different things. He had some very specific criteria to really make sure that it was well-done, and I've tried to address those. I tried to address all those in that estimate. I actually told him, I was like, if this is wrong, just like if I can't remember everything, just tell me so I can make sure. So, I think I must have included everything in it, so.
Even our permit fee?
Yeah. Yeah, we called, I mean, we were checking on that, making sure that everything was correct. We, you know, we want to make, we are a company that does things by book. I'm actually in the process right now of doing my application for an Oklahoma women-owned business. Right now, like I just have to, I've got literally everything in my laptop right now, and I'm just, I was like doing some stuff today to try to finalize that. So, we're kind of different than other roofing companies, you know. You kind of get a lot of different kinds of people in roofing.
What's your estimated project completion time on all this, once we give you the go-ahead?
It's only 20 squares, and I know you had alluded to the fact that we'll just have to figure out the dumpster situation. That's not a big deal. I mean, if weather is, if weather kind of cooperates, three or four days, maybe, maybe, maybe not even that. Maybe like two or three. It's the decking, but the paint will be, we'll have to come back and do the fascian software repairs and the painting. So, I mean, you know, it just depends, because those are different trades than the roofing.
So, one of the considerations I've thought about, obviously, we have our master parks plan, and if we had a large budget, you would probably tear down the, at least the pergola, the north pergola by the tennis courts. You'd probably have that one tore down if you had unlimited funds and go back with a new metal-type kit, as they call it. So, the bathroom is obviously a cinder block construction with a wood truss roof, and it has wood soffits, which you can see in the photos, it's in really poor shape. So, you could go back with metal, but it's going to be a lot more expensive. These are small areas, and they're octagonal. Anyway, they're oddly shaped, so it increases the cost of the metal. This might be an interim. I don't know exactly if you had an unlimited budget, you could just do what you wanted to.
I would anticipate with a metal, you're going to have a lot of waste, because it's basically like an octagon. And so, I'm anticipating there'd be a lot of waste with your cuts, which means, you know, whereas if each of those pergolas is like seven squares, like about 700 square feet-ish, and so, you know, with roofing, with shingles, you might do eight squares worth with waste, right? With metal, you might have to do 12 or 13 squares, because, I mean, just because it's so, what we call cut up. There's just tons of waste. And, you know, shingles are smaller, so you can kind of manipulate them a little bit better than your pieces of standing seam metal or corrugated metal.
And we never actually picked a color, so, but I try to stay out of the color-picking business.
All the same, please.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, probably, I mean, there's tons of colors, but probably black or weathered wood. Weathered wood is kind of the color you see on like new construction houses. It's kind of that grayish brown. I mean, that's pretty safe.
So, you mentioned two, maybe three days. How soon can you get on the project?
Pretty quickly, pretty quickly. I want to make sure. I need to coordinate with him. I probably want to maybe go back over the project again and just make sure, because it's been a few weeks since we were out there. And I just, I want to be prepared and make sure that, you know, we have everything in place and to make, because once we get on the ground, I want it to go quickly. You know, I don't want to, that's a really big important thing to me, is I don't want to be, you know, it's intrusive, right? When you do construction, it's going to be intrusive, but I want to get in and get out as quickly as I possibly can.
We'd probably put up construction fencing, the orange temporary fencing, and we would provide the dumpster for them to throw the shingles in. And so, try to facilitate this and minimize the amount of exposure.
I'm sure we can avoid the city permit for roofing, since we're paying for it anyways. We still got to get an inspection done, but.
How long have you all been in business?
Almost two years. My background, actually, I'll get into it. I was a high school principal. And got out of it and got into construction about five years ago. I worked for a company and became, it was a large roofing construction company, became a, I guess a team leader would be kind of the best thing after about four or five months. Became the corporate training manager after about a year, started a division. They have a division in Oklahoma City. Worked at that. I was the division, I was the division leader or division branch manager of that company, and then just kind of branched off on my own. My company is one of seven companies that is vetted through what's called AccuServe, which is, AccuServe works for nine insurance carriers. And when people call in and they have a claim, you know, on their roof, and they'll say, do you want us to send out a contractor? And we're one that's been vetted. We've all been background-checked. They've gone through our financials. Back, you know, all that stuff. I have a completely like unblemished background. And they check like our reviews, and they checked everything. So, I feel like, when I say it's only been about two years, that kind of doesn't really tell the story.
Right. I was going to ask you if you worked with any insurance companies, yeah.
I've worked with a ton of them. I've worked with a ton of them. I don't know if I can say this, but.
I'll say this. I have to abstain on the coming vote. I have an existing business relationship with the roofer. But I will tell you, she's done my roof. I have referred her to other people. She is of impeccable quality. She doesn't miss anything.
And I'm here not because of that relationship.
Yeah, I didn't even know about this until two months ago, so it didn't matter to me.
It's a completely separate deal.
I had no prior knowledge that she had done his roof.
Yeah, there was no prior knowledge.
I mean, I spoke to him about it after I'd met with him and provided the estimate.
She just came recommended, and she came right out. We spent the time to.
So, I guess the question comes, do we want to upgrade the shingles?
I mean, what kind of, could we, could we motion to contract her with the possibility of an upgraded estimate for an upgraded shingle? Can we, Matt?
It's not going to be, I mean, I'd have to get with my distributor tomorrow and get the numbers on the shingles for the Class IV, but it's not going to be. There's just not a ton of roof, and so, it's not going to be a huge difference. It's only like 2,000 square feet total between all of them. It's like 88 and 6, or whatever. I don't know, something. It's about to, I say eight, eight squares, like 800 square feet. It's not a lot, so we're looking at maybe 22 squares. Maybe I have to look. I mean, honestly, it's going to be well under like $2,000. I don't, I think it would be closer to like 12, 1300 would be. And I will upgrade it at my cost. I won't. I'll just, you know.
What happens if the parks plan, the parks master plan, if we end up having to tear down these structures, then it's money wasted, though. That's the converse side. We drop 19 grand with her. We go with a new parks plan. We tear down that pergola.
But is the new parks plan budgeted?
Not yet, but then what if that area is the area that we want to put in a splash pad? Something's got to go.
What I'm concerned about is we can't spend anything that's not already budgeted.
That's true. Just talking about the future, then it would be like money wasted. Let's say we did the parks plan two years later or whatever. That's money that we just wasted now that we're not getting back, that we're tearing down a building for.
But the parks, the parks plan, in my opinion, is going to happen over a lot of time. So, we don't have to necessarily.
And the roofs need something now.
Get it, yeah. Thank you.
The splash pad, where is that? You have it in the master works plan where they were.
She's going to speak to it.
Pam, we have 150, Pam?
The only thing we've recommended that is to be removed in the parks are the storm shelters, because no one's using them.
Okay.
So, no worries about that.
Okay. Thank you, Connie.
Pam, we do have 150,000?
We have 150,000 for parks.
That's, well, hold on. So, here's something to be considered with looking at the bids. Our obligation is to do the best for the city. And that is lowest or best. And lowest and best. And she is the absolute highest by thousands. Because one of the other bids is around 11, and then the other one is, so Champion is, and I didn't, I rough estimated the other ones.
But they used OSB versus plywood. On your bid, I wasn't sure. Does that include all three structures? Bid that you, I didn't really have any contact with the third bid. Wasn't clear if that included all three.
Well, no, I totally get with the, I mean, plywood versus, I mean, I totally get it, but it's just need to be considered from a legal standpoint on.
I mean, if they're different, if they're. If they're not apples to apples, then your, her bid is not comparable to theirs.
Right.
Not contracting out, resurfacing, you know, 42nd from Ann Arbor to MacArthur, where it's all the same material. It's all the same project, just people bidding on that project. There was more flexibility in these. What you could do, how much do you think it would be increased, just back of the envelope, guesstimate? To go with the better shingle?
I mean, I can do it for my cost. I won't charge any.
I'm more trying to figure out just a wag on what that number might be.
That's our technical term, a wild-ass guess. Hey, she's not the absolute highest. We're looking here at one of those bids, and it's $31,461. So, she's 12 grand lower. Okay, sorry. I didn't see that one. I saw the top three. My fault.
My cost, and I'd have to look tomorrow, but I would spitball. It'd be like about 1,200 more for a Class IV. It's not, it's not a huge difference to go Class IV shingle.
So, what you do, if you're inclined, is approve this bid, and especially if we're going to have a special meeting next week, potentially, you come back with a change order, as long, as long as she didn't say about 4,000 or 20% of what the, then.
No, I mean, I'm happy. I do that all the time. I could give homeowners, like others say, I'll upgrade for my cost. I do that all the time, just customer service.
So, you come back and approve it later as a change order.
And I can coordinate with you the next few days on that if we need to.
Let's go all the way down to Red River. That's amazing. Jip, you were in the wrong business. It's a bloodletting, for sure.
It's a, this is a side part, and I don't know if this is even relevant, but I tell people this, labor and profits haven't gone up since 2019 in roofing. It's materials.
Oh, yeah. It's all material.
It's crazy, the price of the way materials. I look back at jobs I did in 2019. I'm like, I would kill to have those.
Yeah, we don't got your 10 and 10 either with us, so that also hurts.
I'm sorry?
You don't have your 10 and 10, like with insurance. So, that's always, with insurance, there's 10 and 10, you know.
What's 10 and 10?
Profit, overhead and profit. It's always included. Not always. I mean. That's where all the, that's where all the profit is. Yeah, absolutely.
But I have, I mean, we have, because I'm a preferred contractor for those insurance companies, I have general liability, I have my workers' comp. I have to have, like, I have to have an umbrella policy. I mean, I have, I have beat my head against the wall.
She's absolutely fully insured. We have no issues here from any type of accidents that could occur on site during the work. And I don't have those policies, because I don't like to handle roofers. I'm not kidding.
It's insane, the cost of general liability.
Make a motion to approve?
Who picks the fellow?
Vicki, do you make the motion?
What are we approving?
I was going to say, what are we, what is the motion?
You need to, you need to.
I don't know what...
Oh, I have to say it.
What's your company name?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve Moody and Foster...
Bid.
Bid.
And if we decide to upgrade it, we'll do a change order.
Yeah.
Choose to upgrade it.
To repair the pergolas at Cherokee Hills and Frank Wood Parks and Cherokee Hills bathroom.
So, we have a staff meeting, I think at ten AM tomorrow morning, so if you can probably get an estimate on what that raise would be, that'd be fantastic before that meeting.
I'm pretty confident, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And who seconded, sorry? John, I thought it was.
John did, yeah.
Douglas?
Yay.
Evans? Truby?
As much as I'd like to, I do have to abstain.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince? Mayor?
Abstain.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, is that where we are? All right, sweet. All right, item number nine, discussion of possible action on approval of purchasing a ten, ten-two yards, ten-four yard dumpsters.
The color is green.
The color is green.
Okay. You've never lived till you've received a phone call from Mike Anderson's group at four o'clock in the morning. We actually had a call at four in the morning that when the truck emptied the dumpster at the Grandies, the person sleeping in the dumpster enclosure claims that his girlfriend was inside of the dumpster.
Oh, my God, oh, my gosh.
So, the fire department responded and dug through the trash, not finding a body, and we wound up taking the truck to the yard and emptying the truck in the yard and verifying there was no body in the trash. Anyway, so this is much simpler, so basically... Fortunately, there has actually been people in the dumpster, put in the truck, the truck has actually compacted, and they have survived, not in our town, but I've actually heard the stories. So, it does actually happen.
It's like that scene from Star Wars, where, you know, crushes them and trash compact.
There's no R2-D2 to save you. It's just Dave, and he's gonna push the red button. So, basically, it's ten-two yard dumpsters, ten-four yard dumpsters, they just wear out over time. Sometimes they mess up and they crush one, they crush one, they got it back in the hopper and pushed the button, and it'd be pretty hard to hammer out, so there's one dumpster down. Sometimes they get hit by cars, and it bends the sides, and it's just not feasible to repair it, so trash is extremely caustic, it eats the bottoms out after so many times you've replaced the bottoms, the sides are gone, and just, there becomes a point of no return, so it's just kind of an annual attrition or replacement of dumpsters over times. So, we use this, we've used this company before, we have used a company that was out of, somewhere around Muskogee, but the shipping costs obviously factor in. So, this company is locally down, kinda by the airport, they've done a great job, the quality is high, they come pre-painted with the color that we use, which is whatever color that is that we picked from Mungers. So, we're real happy with their work in the past, and they're local, and they're fast, and they do a good job.
Yeah, it's budgeted.
It's budgeted in the CIP budget of thirty thousand dollars. That leaves about ten thousand for bottoms and other repairs that might come up.
I make a motion to approve purchase of the new dumpster.
I'll second it.
Evans?
Yes.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Truby?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. All right, item number ten, formal presentation for the draft of the citywide national master plan, and that would be Ms. Connie.
Hello. So, in your packets this month, you should have gotten, isn't that great, a draft of the parks master plan. It's fairly long, so we don't wanna go through a page-by-page thing, but I just thought I could give you a summary of what we did, and where we are, and where we wanna go from here. So, as, we've been working on the plan since January of this year, it included public meetings, because we wanted to get input from the public and from you. We did have stakeholders meetings, I think most of you attended, we also had a public meeting, and we also had a Survey Monkey survey that citizens at large could put their input in, so that we could include that in this plan. We've done a lot of research about War Acres, your demographics and your history, and how that affects the plan, we've also evaluated each of the parks, and we have, I wanna say, considered how much things cost. We did not tear anything out, just because we didn't like the way it looked. We were as fiscally responsible as possible in the improvements that we're recommending, and we did recommend improvements to the park system as a whole, and to each and every park. Primary things that need to be addressed, and I, we have kind of a, "You need to do this, it'd be nice to do this, and it'd be really nice to do this," you know, we've got it broken down in different parts. The things you need to do are things that have to do with ADA, making sure that all of the parks are accessible, and that most of the park equipment is also accessible. That's a federal law, and so, that's why it's there. If you want to get federal money, which is really why you did the plan, is to get money, you have to meet federal guidelines. So, that's one of the first things we did. The other thing we looked at was safety, there are several things in the park that could be made safer and should be made safer, for especially the playgrounds. Those are outlined in the plan. And then we also have things that would just be really nice to add, you know, that would increase use, that would increase, for instance, a lot of your playgrounds are targeted towards the same age group, yet it's nice to be able to have park improvements that we can all enjoy, that adults can enjoy, that little bitty kids can enjoy, so we have included those things that would make the parks more enjoyable for everyone in War Acres. I don't wanna go through the whole thing, because I feel like this is presented to you as a draft, we'd really like to get your comments. I will say that in the process of getting ready for this meeting, I found one fairly, I consider it a major omission. I was gonna let someone to tell me that they found it, but that's not true. One omission is, we are gonna recommend new pickleball courts at Baker Kwanis Park, and I don't know how we missed it, but that will be in the final version. I also found a few other typos, which one would expect, because it's a pretty big document. I think this park master plan is going to give you a great tool to get money, and I think that's why you did it, you'll be able to apply for grants, and there is a whole section in the back that has different types of grants that you can get for different types of improvements. You also can use this to approach, you know, companies and say, "Do you wanna have your name on the shelter," or whatever. There are improvements that I think a lot of people would like to have their name behind. So, you can use this master plan to get a clear direction of where you wanna take your parks. If you have any questions, I'm certainly ready to answer.
Are you talking about getting rid of the tennis courts, or just adding pickleball?
Just adding pickleball.
Okay.
Well, it takes out a tennis court.
Takes out one, one of them?
Well, Baker Hughes, where we're just gonna add new, we're gonna leave the tennis courts and add new pickleball.
Okay.
We walk Kwanis Park right by there every day, and at least only one court is being used, so, so, having a second one being pickleball.
Isn't pickleball just a smaller, I mean, I've never gotten in, is it just smaller tennis ball court?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, with a wiffle ball.
In the nets, there is a cost associated on it.
Yeah, yeah.
But chicken and pickle's in town now, so, you know.
I mean, everywhere we go...
Yeah, it's everywhere.
It's pickleball, pickleball, pickleball. And I really need to play.
Chiropractors love them.
Doctors love them.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, chiropractors, doctors, they love them, all those injuries.
I know we talked a lot about what to do with that Dorothy Kavner Park, and we have a committee that's dedicated to the animal control department, and we've been talking, and I know why you said you wouldn't put a dog park there, but we feel like we would like to look at that. And that we do such a good job with our animal shelter, we kinda feel like that may go hand in hand with them, and so, that was just something I was gonna throw out there to you, that we're...
We did show a dog park at Frank Woods Park...
Yeah.
In the kinda big, open area that's sloped, so there's, you can't really play a lot of large sports there, so it seemed like a good place. I still think it'd be a nice place to put it at Dorothy Kavner Park also, but I would probably suggest you change your policy for the...
That aside, we do, we do a good job of not having to do that.
Yeah.
So...
Good. And if you have any other questions, I'd like it if people would send me emails, so, you know, this was missing. It's a whole lot easier to criticize a plan, I've found, than it is to write one, and at the very beginning, we asked for your input, we didn't really get as much as I'd like, so this might, it might be that I put something down and you say no, I wanna hear that. So, if we could get comments, maybe within the next two or three weeks?
Say, before, by planning commission, next meeting, probably, so that way we can have things kinda put in place for the packet. It's the best plan for that.
Thank you, this is very thorough and very informational, thank you.
Great.
Super thorough. Any questions or anything right now? Next time, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
All right, item number eleven, discussion of possible action on approving partial lump sum fifty percent to accured benefits for Kevin Strong.
He earned this, he worked here, he was vested for ten years, and it's just really a formality that he will have to tell OMRF that yes, he can have his money. And probably in the next month or so, you'll be getting the other half of this on how he wants to, whether he's gonna get it monthly, or when he wants to start drawing the rest of it.
So, are these...
Is it a pension plan?
Yeah, are these required minimum...
This is pension plan.
So, these are RMDs, like, require minimum distributions? No, he's not retired age.
Oh, so he's older than, he's younger than fifty-nine and a half?
I'm not ninety percent sure, yeah, he's a pretty young guy.
So, is he, I mean, are we talking here that this is a policy loan, or a withdrawal?
He's withdrawing. He's withdrawing half of his money.
It's his money, it's all his tax money, I mentioned that in the text, so...
It's money that's in the pot at OKOMR.
We can't hold him back from him.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Truby?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, item number twelve, discussion of possible action on ordinance amended, all those sections, adopting definitions of nicotine products, vapor products, in person, increasing the age limit violation related, said to from eighteen to twenty-one, adding nicotine and vapor products to existing prohibitions related to tobacco products, modifying the fine amounts for minors and possession of products. Myers?
So, at the last council meeting, one of the chief's reports said that they did an under-twenty-one project for alcohol, trying to find out who's selling alcohol, basically testing them. They can't do that for tobacco, because our ordinances don't match...
The federal law?
The state and federal, so we're just upgrading ours to match theirs, and allowing them to have that ability to do an under-twenty-one project for tobacco and vaping products.
So, you wanna rat out somebody that's having a good time?
Chief, do you have any input?
Self-explanatory, as the detective, or Captain Peters, had stated in his narrative for last month's report, when it came up, obviously, this has been an issue statewide, it's just something that the legislatures have tried to work with and adjust, but it is a problem within our state, across our state, because of underage people consuming tobacco products. With the request, that's what we're doing, is trying to be in line with what the state allows us to do. That way, there can't be a argument as to whether or not this is a state issue, municipal issue, this allows us to deal with it municipally. With the load that our district courts see, anything that's sent to district level at something like this, they would want to kick back to the municipal level, and then it becomes an issue because, and mad if I'm wrong, speak up, but the municipal courts will say, "Okay, there's a deviation here, and we can't move forward," so nothing happens. And this clears all of this up, and allows us to take action and be able to deal with it at both a municipal level, and also deal with it if the district level decides to kick something back to the municipal court.
I'll say it more bluntly, as a city prosecutor, DA's office has had some staffing issues, I mean, there was kind of an exodus before the last election, and minor misdemeanors they're not taking, they're just not, and we had a gap in our ordinance, because they increased, they changed the state statutes back November of twenty-two, and so, it was a crime. Our ordinances were still the old language, so this is just bringing them in line with the new state statutes. What it meant was, when the DA's office kicked it back, if we don't have an ordinance that it fits under, then nothing happens.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Truby?
Motion to approve, let's modernize the code, so we don't have to have stuff getting kicked back, wearing some meds.
I'll say that.
Truby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
No.
Motion approved.
Due to the fact that I don't think you should govern morality, that's an individual's choice.
But kids don't have their brain yet.
They're eighteen. Eighteen is an adult, he can go serve in the military, let him smoke.
Do we need a motion to approve the emergency clause? I'll make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Second. Myers?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Truby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, item number thirteen, so we are to questions and comments, item number fourteen, Mr. Prince.
Oh, I just appreciate all the work, the good work city workers do for us, and glad to see that the Putnam City School Centennial Center is getting kicked off. I had no idea that they were gonna be moving that much dirt.
Oh, wow, yeah.
They have really got after it, so, we have a completion date for when that's gonna be done?
Next summer, I think.
June of summer?
Yeah.
Now, I'm trying to remember, I know that they talked about an amphitheater, and also administration building, or a three-story, something like that.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly.
I don't remember, but I was trying to tell mine.
Our ladder truck will reach.
Say again?
Our ladder truck will reach.
Okay, all right.
Otherwise, we would've asked them for however much a new truck would cost. I mean, I would've.
That it?
Thank you. Von Thayer?
As always, both chiefs, thank you, you and your men, Mike, you and your guys, awesome, Pam, you and your troops, they're the officers, just, thank you. One thing I don't feel, on paper Sunday, brings up Love and Laundry, at Doug's Laundry, I don't know if y'all read that?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we should do something to help promote that. What an awesome program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they get together on a Saturday and provide laundry for homeless and people who can't afford to buy food, everything on them. I think we had a look at doing, I don't know what it'd be, I just pulled that out and said, there's something we ought to wrap our heads around, and it's right here in our city, the middle of our city. So something to think about. It's called Love and Laundry. But I do thank everybody for what y'all do.
Yeah, they're great people over there. Douglas?
Just thank all the employees. I really don't have anything else to say.
Myers?
Well, thanking the employees, fire and chief, please, more than anything, I ask you guys to stay safe, that it's a crazy world out there, and make sure that y'all are putting your priorities in the right place and staying safe. Thank you, Mr. Turman, for your getting those roofs done. I'm excited about that. Thank you to the chief and the deputy chief for their commitment to the Animal Control Center and allowing us to input on that. And I gave everybody a sheet of what we recycle, when we recycle, and where we recycle, so we'd love to see you guys out there. That's all.
I didn't get that.
Can you send that to me?
You didn't even have that.
Judy, could you send that to me in a PDF or a JPG or something, so I can make sure that that's always posted for us? That'd be great. Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Thank you.
I would too, would like to thank all the director and chiefs and all the staff for their hard work, especially when we look at these reports, all the work gone into everything, especially the streets. That is crazy, all those wires and cables hanging down. There's just so much work done to run the city. I'm just impressed and amazed. It's good to be a part of it. That's about it.
Awesome. Judy?
No comments.
Edit.
I just got one question. On 50th Street there, do we know what the water leak is in the middle of the road that's been leaking for about a month?
Oklahoma City, we've called them, it's turned in, they marked it, we've done, they've done the Oki locate. Santos has called me, everybody's called me, and it's, they just have bigger leaks in other places. There was one right by the bank there, by the Auto Zone. You could probably kayak down it. It was the perfect storm. It was just going right down into the bar ditch. You really couldn't see it unless you just drove by and looked over, and so I'm sure they have, it's one of the minor leaks they have, but it.
Destroy that street.
Yes, 50th.
And make it, so hopefully, we can make them enlarge their permanent repair after they come to fix it.
Yes, we had a leak right in that area a couple of years ago, and we had to fight them because it undermined the street. And if you've driven to the east between Portland and Tulsa, there's a big portion of the road that's been undermined, it's on, that's down to one lane.
I know who does, who's in charge of those utility repairs.
Well, I'll call you then. I will call you.
Anything else? All right, cool, thank you. I just want to say thank you for everybody, Public Works Engineering, Planning, everybody that's shown up. Mike always showing up to run it for us, police and fire. You know, things are a bit tight with the city, and we just got to keep pushing forward on who we can talk to, where we can talk to them, as well as helping existing companies that are here, hey, how can we help? I keep hearing that. I had a couple of conversations this month, last couple of weeks, with different business owners and ways that we can help serve them. So we'll be bringing a lot of that up and around as soon as possible. Thank you, everybody that actually came to the education for kind of learning about the town center. I know that a couple of you weren't able to due to scheduling conflicts and stuff, but we'll kind of get that finished and finalized because it's a great program that was established, and it's one of those things that's on the shelf, and we want to make sure to use, take it off the shelf and utilize it. Josephine's, that property that's mixed use, they still have one side that's not being utilized yet, one side is a barber. But the value of the TIF and how we do it is that there's a 20 to 25-year value that we get money every year from it. So even if it's a non-tax producing revenue business, we're getting, talked to Larry Stein's office, and we're getting around $12,000, and that number will increase, which is the spending power of around $300,000 in our city. You know, I know $12,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but $300,000 is what it takes to make that happen. As well as with the OWRB loan forgiveness, Mark and I were at the meeting today. Thank you for everything that you guys did to help us get that done with our trip to DC, plus just talking to people and everything else. That purchasing power is around $30 million in loan forgiveness. So it's a it's a big deal that we're able to keep doing that, and Mark and your team, thank you so much for all y'all do, for helping us do that. Sign ordinance is going to be coming up, talking about some things. It's kind of a mess whenever I talk to staff, just like our food truck ordinance was a mess. So there's just some things coming down the pipe. So thank you, everybody, for taking the time to be here and be a part of this and making our city better.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that TIF and Town Center meeting was very informative. I learned a lot, so it was a good deal.
Good. All right. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to Public Works Authority Meeting at the Claire Quorum. Is that is that in your order? For Public Works? Okay, all right. May I make sure my hands are all right? Called to order to Claire Quorum, item number two, consent docket. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket for discussion under action under number three. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Thank you.
Second.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Douglas?
Morris? Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Mayer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, item number four, SRB report for waste master plan and program. And did you need one of these?
Sign that.
Hello.
Do you need a copy of that?
And thank you.
Thank you.
Here is my update on the SSES and the wastewater master plan. So on the outside, not a lot has changed from last month. We got a big dump of deliverables, and so we are just wading through them. Lots of CCTV footage, over 1,000 manhole results, lots of smoke testing results. So we're just going through it all. And for the manholes, we're, a big focus for us has been ranking them, and so this is kind of a front-end list for the immediate need that we've noticed that for some manholes, like that only need lids, it's about 25 of them, because three manholes are just missing their lids. And 22 were noted as being in dangerous shape, being corroded or cracked, something along those lines. Six manholes are below grade, and so we will suggest raising those up to grade. Whole rehab, about 134, and a likely replacement, only 16, because we can rehab a lot. And so it's 134 out of about 900 some odd manholes. And future R and R lids, about 528 of them, so over half of the system should probably get new lids. And in good condition, we've got 221 lids. As for going through all of the other categories, we have things that we look at, such as the chimney, the cone, the wall, the bench, the pipes, the frame, and so sorting through all that to make sure that everything's okay is time-consuming, and then verifying that by looking at the photos. So that's why I'm hesitant to put a specific number, but the lids, about 221 of them are in great condition. And then unknown condition, we're about 217 out of the total, I think there was 1,000 records or inspections on the database. 217 were either inaccessible, something was on top of them, or they couldn't be reached, the property owners, we couldn't get into the backyard, or they weren't found. There are several that were in our atlas that just don't, we're not sure how they got into the atlas, they just apparently don't exist on the ground. Or maybe they was put in to our atlas, but really it doesn't exist in the line, just goes from point A to point C instead of hitting point B in the middle. Or they're lamp holes, which is not a manhole, and so it wasn't inspected, it's just kind of a small thing at the end of the line. So we are sorting through all of that, but the immediate need that we will be proposing for part of the 10 million bond program that is going on is under the immediate need.
Is under the what? I'm sorry?
Immediate need.
Okay.
Yep, that's what we're looking at first.
How many lamp holes do we have? Do you have any idea?
Not off the, uh.
They're experts.
Oh.
They are the experts. They are the experts.
That might be the.
I probably did.
13 are lamp holes, according to a message that I got from the young woman who's helping me. But I think that there are actually a lot more lamp holes that exist. It's more that those were something that was identified as a manhole, but it turns out that it's a lamp hole.
You know, I live in Wakersham just about my whole life, but I've never, ever seen one of the lamp holes. I know they're probably there, but, I mean, I remember when the sewer system was put in, that's how far I go back, but I don't ever remember any seeing lamp holes in my neighborhood, but I guess they're probably there, but I don't know if they're really serving.
We can show you one if you want to see one.
Do they really serve a purpose? I mean, are they worth messing with?
Go ahead.
Not to interrupt you.
Nope, nope.
Just basically, in lieu of a manhole at the end of the line to head in, they just would take the eight-inch pipe and bring it out with a sweep and then put a metal plate over it. That's all it is. So it was just a cost-saving measure. Because the manholes were built by hand, by with bricks.
Yeah, I remember. I don't know.
Yeah, that's that's all there, that's all, that's the reason.
Wait a minute for it.
Yeah.
I mean, it lasted what, 40?
I mean, is that something that we, is that something we're concerned about repairing, or we just let them collapse and don't worry about them, or?
That's.
Because they're at the end.
That's what their inspection is going to find out.
Well, they they were not inspected per se because the scope of that contract was to inspect manholes, and so when they were opened up and seen to be a lamp hole, it was just noted down, this is a lamp hole.
Okay. And there was only 13 of them?
Hmm, that were identified, instead of being manholes, this is actually a lamp hole, but there are more of them.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Don't we have an easement to go in to private property to inspect or service manholes that are in backyards?
You should, yeah.
OG&E doesn't ask permission to go into your backyard and work on their power pole. They just go.
Yes, but we.
It's in an easement. That's what I say. So we should have an easement.
It's in an easement. Same easement.
Yeah. Which means that we should have the same right to inspect it and not be limited to permission from the landowner.
You're supposed to come in from the end of the street and go down the easement, which is not very practical, jumping fences and so forth. So in the interest of the homeowners to receive their service, it would be in their best interest to allow entry.
Or.
And we've resolved a couple of difficult people when we gained the entry and got the inspections in.
That's why I didn't understand why we would have some that we couldn't get to, unless it was something built over the top of it. I understand that, but.
Which they're, those exist too.
Locked gates, they won't respond to, we put a hanger on the door, we try to catch them home. The gate is locked, they have a big dog.
You ever find your rug in the door, or?
Hmm, is this, like I said, OG&E just comes from a different yard, but they'll find a yard and they'll still get back there, and they'll get their service done. They don't wait for you to come home if they're coming into service. I just didn't know if we had the same rights.
And we we have taken fence panels down to gain access, and obviously, they want us to do it for the liability purposes.
Sure.
And so we tread lightly and repair, you know, we don't go in with like a bull in China shop and tear the fence down and so forth, so we always try to get a person to answer the door. We try to.
Well, of course, you try that first.
And how it is and that that sort of thing, so.
Amanda?
Sorry.
Are you done with the smoke testing and the CCTV stuff?
The smoke testing, yes, they should be done with that. The CCTV, no. That will actually continue on for a little bit, and that's part of, let's see, what agenda item is?
The next.
Yeah, it's just part of the next agenda item.
Okay.
We'll actually be continuing that. So what's next is we will continue prioritizing the manholes, review the smoke testing results, and we should get the last of those in the next month. CCTV results, we'll continue to receive those. For this round of CCTV results, we're expecting that to be turned in by the end of August, and then we will incorporate our results and recommendations into the wastewater master plan this fall, kind of over the holidays. So that's the SSES for the wastewater master plan update. We've worked on trying to refine our cost estimates, phasing plan, and revising the draft report. I've been going over the draft report the past couple of weeks and making edits to it and fine-tuning it so that we can share it with you all. And so I just wanted to bring this up because we'll bring this up again as part of the next agenda item. The five main projects that we identified are the four-inch line at 50th and Meridian, the library service line, interceptor, interceptor, and reducing INI. And we estimated about $46.7 million to accomplish all of these. We know we don't have funding for it, but that's part of what we're trying to help you guys with, is identifying funding and putting in a phasing plan so that you can accomplish the most important tasks with the available funding. So I kind of wanted to go into them a little bit more. So the four-inch line at Northwest 50th, we plan to upsize the four-inch line to eight inches, and we think that'd be about, on the very conservative end, 1.1, likely it's going to be a lot less. We just want to cover our bases, and that's the blue line that is shown on the map.
Right there.
I meant to look that up for all of these, and I forgot.
I mean, that's a large number for.
Yes.
Well, how many service calls do you get for that section of line to unplug it on a monthly basis? As I say, I know it's a constant headache.
It's a constant headache.
Yeah, when I, when I spoke with the public works staff, this was the number one thing that they brought up, and they brought it up at every meeting. Even if I just was out in the field talking with the guys, they were like, oh, when are you guys going to cover that line? So this, this is priority number one for us. And then the library service line was the next most frequently mentioned topic. The service line coming from the library is frequently clogged, there's no access manhole to clean out any clogs. And also, that blue line is eight inches, and the lines on both sides are 10 inches,[1717.66] which just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we proposed to upsize that to ten inches.
Do you plan on putting any more manholes in there? In, you said there weren't any, so...
Well, the manhole would be along the service line, which comes down from the library.
Is that the blue line?
Yeah, the library is up here.
Yeah.
It's across the street.
Or it's this building?
Right there.
Okay, yeah, so we would put in a manhole somewhere along here.
Maybe on the south side of the street, right there.
Yeah, we would work with Mike to figure out where exactly he wants a manhole. And then interceptor north of sixty-third, sections of that line have exposed rebar, and our hydraulic model that we ran has indicated surcharges. That doesn't mean that they actually happen. It just means that they could happen, or that the line isn't draining as quickly, and so part of the manhole is filling up, in theory. I will say Mike has done an excellent job managing the system. And so this one is kind of expensive, but it's, that would be the cost to replace all of it. I will say on the next agenda item, we are looking at mainly replacing this little section by the lake, where it goes under a dam. And then a section of the interceptor south of sixty-third street, near Redmond Avenue and Northwest fifty. This line, I think it's a sixteen inch, and so we would propose upsizing it to eighteen inches. And this one is based also on conversations with city staff, saying, yes, after you guys get these other three projects, we would also like to work on upsizing the rest of the interceptor. And so this is an area based on talks with the guys, and in the model, this would benefit from being enlarged.
Mike, that's inside Public Works, right? Underneath it?
Yeah, I don't think the configuration is very good, because there's one, uh... It's part of the interceptor, so there's a lot of flow in that area, so...
Yeah, the interceptor...
That blue line, there is a lot of flow right there on that blue line.
Comes down like that.
Yeah.
That are called the main lines?
It's one of the main lines. It collects everything south of forty-seven.
Really?
Yeah.
Yes. And so that's why we would want to upsize it. And then just generally reducing I N I, we will have more information as we dig through all the CCTV and smoke testing results. But a lot of that is R and R for manholes and R and R for pipelines.
How many illegal taps would we identify?
They refer to cross connections like we're, like a gutter.
Well, like storm drainage that a residence tapped into the sewer line.
That's hopefully what the smoke testing revealed. I know there's one down at St. Charles in the thirty-six area. We've actually looked with our machine for cross taps and storm drains, but I don't know. Have they found any of you? We haven't seen the reports.
None that they told me about.
I know of the one down at thirty-six of St. Charles.
Yeah, I know there was like the gutters that were connected.
Yeah, it was a gutter that was tied into the, which could contribute considerable amount, too.
Well, I'm glad it wasn't a widespread issue, because I know in the past it has been.
And, and one of the unknown factors is, is that particular person has a manhole in his backyard. All he has to do is just lift the cover.
Yeah.
And that's pretty hard to, uh, catch.
Please.
So, I mean, you have a large hole and they're filling up. It's right by the lift station. You know, you can fill it up in just a matter of minutes.
So, so that's my overview of the main projects that we're proposing. And so we'll finish that up, finish the draft, review it with city staff, and then we'll present it to you guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, any questions? Comments? All right. Item number five, discussion of possible action on amendment to the engineering contract for the sanitary sewer pipeline manhole repair replacement. Um, this, I'll let Mr. Mark Long explain the rest.
Okay, there's a handout that I passed out with the green highlight on it. Um, so what this item is, is this is actually the item that you approved, a, a contract for SRB through OWRB for one point five million dollars in March. Okay, and that was part of applying for, uh, the loan forgiveness, the Clean Water Act loan, where they're going to forgive the entire amount, and it was for preliminary planning and engineering. And in order to apply, you had to approve a contract with this subject to it being approved. Okay, um, so today, uh, this morning, this is the agenda item for the Oakland Water Resources Board this morning at nine thirty. If you flip over to the second page, um, it lists on agenda item number three, the Clean Water Act S R F. That's the, the state revolving fund, principal forgiveness loan applications. And you can see items A through H. So actually, the way it, it, it works down, the highest ranked project was in Garvin County with the city of Winniwood, and they got the full one point five million. Uh, War Acres actually ranked third, and so that's why we got a lesser amount. Based on the scoring, they prorated the one point five, and that's what they allowed, was one million two hundred nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And that can all be used for engineering design, and that will reduce the engineering costs that would come out of the ten million dollar Clean Water loan that you got last year. The way it was set up, we had engineering in that contract. This will be able to offset that by quite a bit. And so the plan, and I left it on the screen, and, and the attachment is, we will start engineering on these projects, and we'll get as many of these designed as we possibly can within the one point two one nine million. That way we'll have them ready and on the shelf. Part of this one point two one nine, we will be using three hundred thousand of that to finish the CCTV. Uh, there, there was, we ran out of the ARPA funds, and so we were going to have to leave a portion of the city without the CCTV. Well, if we use the three hundred thousand out of this contract, then we'll have CCTV for the entire system. That will pick up some of these other things that we were talking about, that we may not have been able to access with the manholes in the backyards or the, uh, other inaccessible areas. So that will greatly enhance being able to do rehabilitation projects using the CCTV for years to come. So, um, that's what you have before you is basically, the contract you approved in March is void, and then this will be the contract that will be in effect. It was approved today. When this is approved, if you approve this tonight, then we will close on the loan forgiveness, uh, in the next couple of weeks, and you'll have the money in hand within thirty days, so. I can answer any questions that you might have.
So basically, the loan forgiveness is just going to pay for the first part with the ninety-nine thousand left over. Uh, the four inch line, is that...
Oh, okay, no, okay, so, no, what's up there, the forty-six million six seventy-one, that is construction costs, okay? What you're approving tonight is one point two million of engineering fees. Our fees usually range anywhere from six to ten percent of whatever the in, of whatever the construction cost is. So depending on the type of project. And so when we, when we did the ten million dollar Clean Water Act, part of the, uh, requirements were there was nine hundred thousand dollars of engineering cost in that ten million. We will not be using that nine hundred thousand, because we'll now be able to use this one point two one.
But the, but the item we have in, in front of us, we previously approved a million and a half.
You, you approved one point five million, because everyone on this list...
Had to.
Everybody that applied. Actually, there was like thirty or forty-five, thirty to, thirty to thirty-five applications. Everybody on this list approved the maximum amount.
Right.
Unless they had some projects that were already, uh, I, I don't know, but, you know, some of these are like, like more specific dollar numbers, like the, the ones that are lower. They probably knew exactly what that project was, so.
But that one's void, so we just need to re-approve the one, one point two one nine, so we can...
Yeah, there's no point, there, there's no point, you can't, you can't award us a contract of one point five when the loan is going to be for one million two hundred nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, so technically, back in March, you approved two contracts. One was an amendment to the S S E S to finish the CCTV, and the other was a new contract for the design of the four inch line and the library service line. And OWRB came back and said, we can't use the money for bidding services, was it bidding services?
Yeah, for bidding, construction, yeah.
Construction admin.
So they reduced that amount now.
Amount difference between one point five and the one point two nine one.
Yeah.
So it's the same stuff, it's just, there's no bidding services, no construction observation, no construction admin. It's just the design.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
So we've got an action item for this, right?
Yes, yeah, to actually approve the contract that was, that was awarded to you today for the, for one million two hundred nineteen thousand one fifty.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for one million two nineteen one fifty.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Evans?
Yes.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Thayer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
Well, thank you. I do want to make a, a positive note, because I heard this today at OWRB. At the end of June, twenty-nine percent of the Clean Water S R F money that OWRB had for last fiscal year, that ended June thirtieth, twenty-nine percent of that had not been spent, had not been claimed, had not been awarded, okay? So there are cities and towns, despite the problem of the same situation you're facing, twenty-nine percent of them that were eligible to receive money left that money on the table. So if we use this engineering money and we get these things designed, the faster we get things designed and have them ready to go, then we'll be able to go after that surplus money that's getting left on the table, so.
Cool, good. Thank you for all your research.
Well, that was just sitting at the meeting, so twenty-nine percent of cities are not capturing the money that they've been awarded.
Yeah, what's wrong with them?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, it's a motion for adjournments.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, uh, City of Wakersham Special Economic Development Authority meeting, called to order to declare a quorum, consent docket. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket. Discussion under action item number three. Have a motion.
I move we approve the consent docket.
Thank you.
Morris?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yeah.
Prince?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, um, also, by the way, I found that email. It was in my draft, so you all did get the, while we were sitting here for the...
At six thirty, thank you, Mayor.
For the resume. I went back at Lotus on the drafts. All right, so, uh, on item number four, I have a couple of, uh, things listed here. So, uh, one of the conditions, I guess, with the contract, I didn't have much of anything to do with this Route sixty-six thing this year. Uh, but if the Shriners showed up, that they could ask for a refund for the amount that they're asking for. And then also, there was another, uh, company, a healthcare company, that will... They never discussed, uh, the wrong logo. They did not supply the logo as they were supposed to. They did not bring the banner that they were requested to hang on the fence. So that company did not do their part, is what I am told. So they're unhappy that they didn't get what they were expecting, but they didn't supply what they were supposed to. So that is what I got the information about today, about this. So it's totally up to y'all.
Did we uphold our end by doing the social media posts and all that that was listed?
For each sponsor that was done, yes, as far as I know. Um, also with the...
Where were those social media posts supposed to be?
I did some of them, and then we did the...
I didn't see any. I didn't see any on our website, on our Facebook page.
I think it was more so on the banners. I don't think there's, I don't, I don't know which level people were. Like I said, I...
Well, the guy that paid seven hundred fifty dollars, Health Market, I didn't see any advertisement for that.
Okay, I, I don't know. I don't know what to tell you, so.
These are all the ones wanting a refund?
Uh, these two people, as far as I know.
Right.
This is just told, I just found this out yesterday, I think.
The, the item, excuse me, the item was worded, well, was prompted by a specific request. It was worded broadly enough to where you wouldn't have to deal with one request. You can if you want to. You could also, more broadly, say whether and to what extent refunds would be given, essentially to give staff directive on if other vendor sponsors come in wanting a refund, here's the criteria to apply. Or the criteria could be as simple as if they ask, give it to them, or if they ask, don't.
Could we offer them credit for next year?
I'm a little confused about the banner, because I thought we were providing the banner for the, for the guy that paid the seven hundred fifty dollars. I thought we were providing it, but then you just said...
The banner that was not supplied, from what you all approved, was if they were going to hang it on the P C O fence that was negotiated with P C, or Potomac City Schools, that they had to supply their own banner to hang on there. Not, we're not printing up a three hundred dollar banner.
But we did print up a banner that we only put up the day before. So that isn't enough advertising for those people to get their bang for their buck.
You paid more than four hundred and fifty, because you paid, you're, you're paying tonight three hundred and something for the design of the banner, and when we had to go pick that banner up, we paid four hundred and fifty. So that banner was really around eight hundred dollars.
And it was supposed to stay on the fence for two weeks, was it?
Their individual business banner, not the banner that was designed and sponsored.
I don't think that was very clear, because I think I misunderstood it as well, if that is the case. But regardless, the banner that we printed up wasn't even up twenty-four hours before the festival. So how can anybody get enough acknowledgement? I don't feel like we carried out our part of the bargain, in my opinion.
I don't disagree. So I guess the question is that if they ask for a refund, do we give them if nobody else asks for a refund? Like, we got a good donation from one of the banks that we use, and they're more so a sponsor for being a community partner, because we do so much business with them. So they haven't asked. So the question is that...
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I think we need, I think it's a real slippery slope. When we take money from these people and we promise them stuff, and we don't ret, I mean, there wasn't, I think they were even promised an, an amount of footpath through there that we didn't have. So if you want to leave it to where, if they apply for it, we'll give it to them, that's one way. I don't, I just think we need to make it available to them one way or the other.
I agree.
So is that a motion?
It can be. I'll make a motion to refund the vendors and sponsors Route sixty-six. What do you call that, an investment? Provided they request, could it request him writing? Does that sound right?
Uh, to authorize staff to refund vendor and or sponsor fees?
Fees, that's a good...
If requested by the vendor or sponsor.
And Ken, we set a time limit, because like, next year they can't say, I want a refund for last year.
Yeah, we need a time.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like that. That'd be nice.
I'd like that tremendously.
Six months now, they come in and they say, oh, well...
If the, uh, so your motion would be to authorize staff to refund vendor and sponsor fees if a request is received during the current fiscal year.
Good, I like it. I make that motion.
Current fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
So the end of...
You want shorter?
I would say till the end of the quarter, which would be the end of August.
Yeah, because I mean, you're still running over accounting periods. It's kind of...
You, you...
Myers, you gotta make that, you gotta make that call. You're the one with the motion.
How, how long you want it?
Pam, Pam looked like this when you said fiscal year.
I, well, I said it technically.
I'll say by the end of September. How's that?
That would be better.
Yeah.
Got a hug. Tough crowd tonight.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion?
I'll say it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, um, item number five, discussion of possible action on what festivals are going to have and how many each year. So the only things that I can recall that we have is, uh, one of the churches, Mike, you might be able to tell me which church it is that does the Our Lady Guadalupe. St. Charles does that, um, we have Festival Amistad, which is the parade, which, uh, Carlos Ortiz does solely by himself, uh, outside of city help for traffic, uh, he partners with Putnam City, and then we have the Route sixty-six thing, and we also have, uh, the multicultural festival, which is also off the table of the city doing anything with that, so that's all
Off the table?
Yeah, because we're gonna, we have an organization that's gonna privately, uh, handle raising funds and all that, so it's out of the hands of the city, so
But it'll still carry our name?
It's in War Acres, promotion, I mean, can change if you want, but, you know, Bethany, so, talking to other cities, ninety percent of all their events are all held by private entities, private nonprofits, whatever. Uh, Bethany just took over the Bethany boom this year, but it's been private for the last fifteen years. So their Memorial Day car show, you know, whatever it is, so most of the festivals that happen are all privately ran.
Okay.
So
Makes good sense.
Because I feel like we don't have the buy-in, um, for the Route sixty-six festival, obviously, with what, you know, we just voted on. So I personally don't believe we need to be involved in that unless there's somebody else that wants to champion that, because I'm not going to.
It's a lot of work.
So that's a choice that this
Well, that, it was my understanding we weren't doing it this year, but then all of a sudden we were doing it this year, so is there some agreement that we have with the other two cities to do it for a certain amount of time?
Yeah, so that was an agreement from last year that, hey, we would do it again this year, so I have told both Bethany and also Yukon that we will not be participating in the triple tour again. If we want to do our own thing, as a city, like that, Yukon really takes the cake at the night, I mean, they got thirty, forty thousand people to show up, just like they do with their Check Hall Festival. Um, Bethany, that same day, they're just gonna keep with their, um, garage sale, citywide things that they do, that's what they've always done that weekend, so it was just an idea, came about whenever Jim was in, and like I said, unless there's somebody on this council, because I'm not gonna have staff do it, if there's somebody on this horseshoe that wants to champion that, then we can, or anything else, but you gotta take ownership of it and do it. So
So there'll be no funds for multicultural or Amistad out of War Acres?
Uh, you know, if the city wants to do a sponsorship for Our Lady Guadalupe, or Festival Amistad, or whatever, uh, yeah, we still can. I know Mr. Ortiz does, uh, hope that we do, and that's a big promotion for us for that, uh, for people coming through our city. It's been going, I think, six years now, I think.
It'd be nice if it was at least promoted on our, like, website or, or Facebook or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely, so we've only been a financial sponsor in the past, I think, only the last two years, um, I don't know, Pam would know for sure, but if we wanted, I mean, that's investing in our partners that really bring a lot to our, our city, and I think that's very important that we do that, it's just I know that this private entity, they will take care of everything for the, um, multicultural festival, that they have not asked for anything from the city.
Okay, thank you. Was that in June, like, like, uh, twenty, twenty-three?
La, la, last year, yeah, the last year of the multicultural festival was like, two weeks after, the week after, um, that, um,
But this year?
This year it's in September.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's kind of whenever all the international stuff is happening already, so it just kind of fits better, and it's cooler, hopefully.
Yeah. Well, I think we should at least make sure the police help the parades, like the Amistad thing.
Yeah.
That was a mess going to church that morning, and there was all these noises and stuff. I was surprised.
If I could interject to
Yes, sir.
And to clarify, we have a permit process that anyone doing a parade has to fill out and sign up, and that allows us to be able to get staffing and be able to control intersections, highways, roadways, whatever we need to be able to do. Uh, I do not think anything you're doing here affects that, that was already a secondary action the council took some time ago.
Has that permit been filed, or?
You know, what they do is they, they can contact us, and we tell them, we'll either mail it to them, they can come by and pick it up, or they can go online and fill it out.
Are they aware they need to do that?
Uh, I, we told the priest over at, uh, St. Charles that after they left all the, you know, horse crap on the road.
And Amistad too knows that they
Amistad, yeah, I told Ortiz
Thank you.
That things have changed. Yeah. Any other questions?
So are you wanting us to decide if we're, how much we're helping, or if we're just, you're just
Uh, as it comes up, you know, it's part of the, you know, what we'll do, so
So is there anything like this next month, nothing?
No, uh, Festival Amistad happens in
September.
September also, it's the first week of September. So I'll let Mr. Ortiz know that he'll need to come up here if, uh, and make a formal request. Um, all right, so do we need to do anything else with that? Just kind, that just kind of is what it is. Okay, um, item number six, discussion of possible action on authorizing the mayor and the vice mayor to attend Oklahoma Select Conference on Economic Development OKC, August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, at the cost of four hundred and fifty dollars per person. This is a, uh, thing that Oklahoma's been doing for some years, uh, I asked for the agenda to be printed off and left for you guys, I'll email it to you, um,
I haven't.
Yeah, we haven't.
Okay, you got it, okay, so did Sweet, okay.
No, I pulled it off their website.
Oh, okay, so, um, anyways, so that's what it is, it's another opportunity for economic development, understanding, education, and I just want to make the statement that we have not spent forty thousand dollars this year on having a company that was not doing anything actively for our city. So this is something that, again, that with, uh, Vicky and myself could attend to continue to help in figuring out what we need to do to continue to serve our city, so, so lift to y'all on what you want, it's in Oklahoma City, it's down at the, uh, it's Oklahoma, uh,
It's, uh
Oklahoma City Convention Center, but Omni is the hotel where people are staying, so no travel, no, just attending.
Omni Hotel. It's a little sad, they sent the email so late that we couldn't get the early bird.
Yeah, I know.
Well, no, that isn't the case. Um, we had an opportunity to get in on the early bird, had you brought it up with the July, the special council meeting. I, I didn't, you know, know about it, so, oh. Right? Am I wrong?
I don't know what the dates were.
What was that day?
Monday, June twenty-fourth is when this email went from Mayor to
Yeah, I don't remember.
Pam, I guess.
We did, we have the meeting.
But we had the meeting like, oh, a couple weeks ago. Last week.
That wasn't something that was asked to be on that special meeting, and I was driving down the highway when I'm getting all messages about special meeting. So I put on there what I got, I didn't look at anything else.
Yeah, we didn't
I said, so lift to y'all, whatever y'all want to do.
What do you hope to achieve?
Uh, go into a conference and learn them as much as we can, I mean, that's what education
Learning, what do you want to learn? That you haven't learned at the other economic development seminars you've been to?
I haven't been to any other city economic conferences, I don't think. I was supposed to go to ICSC in Vegas, or that was one of the options, and that was declined, but, again, this is a local thing, it's put on by Oklahoma, it's specific to Oklahoma, we are the most unique state in the entire country, because we don't get any abhorrent tax.
Do we have many
I think attending seminars in Oklahoma City makes all kinds of sense.
Oh, we didn't get it in time.
Local education is what counts.
I agree. And that's why I brought it as an option, because the fact that it is Oklahoma, they understand Oklahoma, I mean, it's local people doing it.
And attending.
And it's in Oklahoma, yeah.
I think it would be helpful, because you could find out about grants and stuff.
Yeah, I just looked it up, our meeting was the eighteenth, and we didn't get the email till the twenty-first, and you have to have it the Friday before, uh, on the, to put it on the agenda, right? Pam, we have to put something
I didn't look at the dates on this, I have no idea.
But don't we have to have something?
I mean, he sent me that, and he said, well, you put it on the next agenda, which was this agenda, and then while I was gone on a trip, I started getting messages about needing to do a special agenda. So when I got to the hotel that night, I threw together an agenda, I sent it out, and I said, and then I leave off the call to order on the economic development meeting.
Technical question, if, if we put something on the agenda, it has to be, what, forty-eight hours before?
If, if you, if you as a coun, if you as a council member want something, there's a deadline that's
I have a forty-eight hour deadline.
Well, you've got a twenty-four hour deadline for agenda, but we don't push to the twenty-four hour.
Oh, okay.
The forty-eights for a special meeting, twenty-four for agenda, but for council members, put something on the, there's an ordinance that's been adopted that, and it's, I can't remember if it's ten days before the meeting, I can't remember the exact deadline, for a council member to put something on the agenda. Staff can, you know, there's internal procedures for staff to get something on, but just as an FYI, if you want something on there
I mean, we had the deadline, the Monday before the planning commission for items for a regular meeting, but we're talking about a special meeting.
Oh, special meeting, yeah, you mean forty-eight hours to call the meeting, twenty-four to get the agenda.
Right, that's what I was saying about the forty-eight.
We're coming up on three and a half hours, I think it's time to conclude the discussion.
I'm, I'm sorry, Roger, I, I didn't have one, I forgot to ask this, this was on the, the number five. Who is the private entity who's taking over the multicultural festival that you mentioned?
It's a different, um, I talked to the chamber of the Asian Chamber, I talked to the Hispanic Chamber, people that are international, so they have discussed that they would like to help sponsor and get those things done.
Okay, so it's, it's private individuals, not a private entity like an LLC, or a INC., or anything like that?
Whatever they're registered as, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what chambers or commerce are registered as.
Okay, so the chambers are taking over the multicultural?
They're asking that they would like to be a part of it, I mean, I have all the volunteers, and I have all the people that helped with the last time, but they're, the Asian Chamber is the most engaged chamber in the entire metro area, and I'm acquainted with ninety percent of them, so they've said they'd like to be a part of it.
Okay, that's all.
Yep.
Back to this, sorry.
Judy, you said you pulled off the agenda for the meeting, does it, any, any particulars as far as what the meetings show? Well, it's, looks like it's, um, a legislative panel to start off, a keynote speaker, and then breakout sessions. Okay. So it's basically a, about a day and a half.
Yeah, training sessions.
I don't know, it doesn't really go into depth what the breakout sessions are.
Okay.
In depth, I mean, it says what they are, but I, whether they're
So I was like, okay.
Training or just them talking to them.
I included all that.
That's training.
That's what it was. Looking for the, there, I don't see it. Been a long wait.
Well, I got a link earlier today that doesn't work.
Does anyone want to
So much of this discussion is because we didn't have the information to review before we got here, so we're doing all of it here, and that's really hard. It'd be so much easier to have this ahead of time so we could look at it, and I don't think we'd have to have nearly as much discussion if we had the information presented.
Yeah, for this item, absolutely, absolutely.
I agree.
I'm easy. When is it? It's August, so we got another month.
Well, you want to
Table it, we can tell you, I'll make a motion that we just table this to next month, and now, and that way we can come back if we want to continue this discussion, we can, and then you guys will have the agenda for it.
Well, if we get to have our special meeting for the
If we have our special, or whenever we have our special meeting,
Yeah, yeah.
We better have it, because we got audience on.
Yeah.
Is there a registration deadline?
That's what I was wondering.
Because our next meeting is, the, it starts
Well, we'll probably have it at the end
After the next regular meeting, so
If they just don't take any action, we can just put it back on.
Yeah, I, my, my only reason I'm bringing that up is if there was a cutoff for the registration, our next meeting is August twentieth for regular
I don't see one on that flyer, but
Yeah, the only thing I see is a cutoff for the early bird, I don't see anything cutoff for the
Is that four fifty, well, quick, wait, is that four fifty just a registration, or is that a night in hotel, or?
No, it said the Omni, that's like, two hundred dollars and nine
And you're non-members?
Yeah, there's no, there's no hotel.
Yeah, there's no
It's four fifty for the registration.
It's just registration.
Yeah.
And they feed you.
Yeah. Well, you get the
Day and a half.
People that can influence you.
Are we a non-member?
I fully support education here.
Yeah, we're not a member of Oklahoma Select.
Oh.
Yeah, all right, we'll take no action on this item, uh, let's go to item number seven, discussion of possible action, submitting application for the Route sixty-six Association Centennial with, uh, an up to fifty thousand city of sharing matching funds, uh, brought this up at the special council meeting, did you guys come up with anything that y'all want to think about or talk about for submitting? Because we got till Friday for this round.
Is this
And that'd be our matching
This would be matching funds, and it would come out of where?
Economic development, I imagine, or CIP.
It's on, it's on here for economic development.
You're in the Economic Development Authority, so
Sorry.
Yeah.
So it'd be the trust.
And it just helps our chances.
Helps, what do you mean, it helps our
What are we applying for?
What are we applying for?
So, that, well, that's what we discussed in the special council meeting was, I had some ideas that were shown on the blade, doing murals, or doing some other kinds of things with Putnam City. So this is, would you guys like to come, I asked if you guys would like to come up with any ideas for this meeting, to discuss anything that you guys have ideas for, or do you want me to just submit and see what lands for the city to be part of the centennial? We have another, uh, application that we will apply for as well, and this, is it December's the third round, um, so we're working with, uh, an organization for that, so.
Submitting for matching funds.
Yeah, it's a meeting for matching funds, but
So is this only contingent upon
Being approved?
So whenever we submit, I mean, I can't say, hey, we're gonna contribute twenty thousand dollars to this forty thousand dollar project if I haven't been approved for up to fifty thousand, or, so I can't, I cannot say we're gonna do this if we don't have approval for some matching funds, or we just don't do anything, and then we just leave it off, and we just leave it alone. So, again, this is a long-term thing, people travel all over the world to hit Route sixty-six, and next year, there's gonna be millions of people coming, or two years out, whatever it is.
We're one mile, we're one mile of Route sixty-six, correct?
Yeah, we got about a mile, I think it's a little bit shorter.
That's a steep, that's a steep bill for
Well, but it's gonna be a celebration coast to coast, so that's the deal, this is the two hundred years?
Hundred year.
Hundred years.
Yeah.
It's the centennial, and it's gonna be a big deal for everybody that's along Highway sixty-six, so that's why they've got this centennial
Yeah.
I should know, Centennial Commission.
And there's also the owner of, um, the chicken place out in Arcadia that's doing a whole program for the Greatest Hundred Miles, which is including Oklahoma City.
Chicken Ranch or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is, so from El Reno, pa, I think up to Claremore, like, whatever that hundred miles is, from El Reno back up north, I think maybe all the way to Tulsa, maybe.
So is this proposal for everything that we would engage in?
Uh, for submitting for this, for the, yeah, for this round, for, so this is to submit to the centennial, which has six point six million dollars that they have every year for the next three years, two years, I guess, remaining two years.
And you said this was in cooperation with Putnam City Schools?
Putnam City Schools, yeah.
That will give us the site
Yeah.
To do something.
Yeah.
Do we have the money in there, Pam?
We got one point seven million dollars in there, or one point five million dollars, however much we put into CDs.
And we couldn't approve the meeting? Sorry.
It's just a daunting figure. It's a very daunting figure for we don't know what This is my two cents.
We know this by Friday?
Yes, for, for us to submit this round, Dakota can help.
So, um, essentially with, with the Route sixty-six commission, with their application, you can apply for grants from two thousand dollars up to two million dollars, is what they have on their website. So in order for me to be able to submit, I need approval from you guys for a matching amount, um, we're working on getting the cost estimate for how much it's gonna cost to get the blade shipped here, as well as as well as how much it costs to get it painted and set. So, I think fifty thousand dollars is probably a steep, it's, it's a steep amount.
This is what we do, yeah.
Um, but whenever we get the full cost estimate, we would just pair that back to what, I mean, they, they, they-
Whatever it costs.
Their, their grading system for this is the more that you contribute, the higher percentage you contribute, the more likely you are to get matching funds. So, while a lot of grants are eighty-twenty, this is one where you could go a higher percentage and be more likely to get the funds. But that is also just dependent on your comfort level and what you want to do.
Yeah. So, for example, this one that was done in Weatherford, that was twenty thousand dollars specifically for the murals to be painted. So, that's what it costs for the murals. The blade was donated. I was actually in communication with him today. They don't have any. They're close, but it depends if we want to do things and highlight. If y'all even want to do that, that's the reason why I asked for different options, different things. So, some sort of mural celebrating, I think, War Acres, Putnam City, Route sixty-six is, that's what I would like to see. Whether it's on a blade, or whether it's on standing concrete wall like we're going to do. Something so that we get it contributed. So, people, you know, they also said that another high rank, so people that are on that board said that if it's a spot where people can stop and take a picture, that also ranks high.
Right, which is part of why our last application did not end up getting chosen, because we were sixteen and they picked, what, twelve?
Twelve, yeah.
And so, we ended up getting ranked sixteenth for murals that were gonna be along, like, the, in the median on Route sixty-six. And it didn't score as high, and we also did a lower match percentage. So, it's just dependent on all those factors.
And this is a one-time thing, right?
Correct, but their application is open on, like, a, they, they have it open twice a year, so we can make as many applications as we want.
Yeah, so there'll be another one in December or December time, fall, winter.
And I'm pretty sure we can submit more than one application per period, so.
But it's all for the centennial celebration.
Correct.
Correct.
So, it's a one-time deal, and then I'd much rather do something like this than a festival every year that wears everybody out. We might even get more feedback and more participation from the one-time.
And this would be placed where the little road is that goes into Putman City? It would be, so that people could stop?
Yes. Yeah, so it's, it'd be, so you think about where that is. So, they're gonna have a big open field on the east side, right on Ann Arbor, the Centennial Building, which is their new admin. They're gonna have the amphitheater, they're gonna have the yard, and then we get to put it on the front side of the yard, just probably halfway, three-quarter, wherever it is.
Facing Thirty-Ninth?
Facing Thirty-Ninth, yeah.
But is it gonna be in front of, is there a fence there?
Well, I mean, there's the road you pull off of. I mean, that's still gonna be there. So, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be accessible. There's not gonna be a fence around the item.
And how long will it be up?
Forever.
Forever.
And when is the centennial celebration or whatever?
Two years, twenty twenty-six. I don't know if that's when the World Cup is too or not, because there's, there's a whole thing that they're working for the World Cup, because they're driving Dallas, Kansas City. It's a huge thing. So, they'll become to Oklahoma City too for that, so. So, this will be an up to, my estimated cost on probably doing this, plus the mural is probably gonna be around thirty thousand dollars, maybe the absolute most. So, if we're contributing fifteen thousand of that, or if it's forty thousand and we're contributing twenty thousand, we can reduce the amount just so that I have something to work with and do.
And that's our side of the mural. The Putman City would paint their side.
Well, we would do it all, but it would be a design, you know, and even Von Thayer mentioned that we have, we got some amazing artists.
Students.
And we got Dove here, we got Putnam City, we got, you know, so.
We talked about Putman City, they having students paint their side.
Well, I mean, it's a discussion to have.
Yeah, it was an idea tossed out.
Yeah, but if it costs us literally just to pay an artist, it'd be about twenty thousand dollars to do it all.
So, you want to approve up to thirty thousand dollars? That's two-thirds. That's, oh, it's all, it's all or nothing? Well, I mean, you-
Our party contributes to-
The agenda i- is up to fifty. You, you could not approve more than fifty. You could approve fifty or less.
Okay. So, the thirty would stand?
Yeah.
If we wanted to approve thirty?
Yeah, you could, you could approve the EDA contributing up to thirty.
Does that give you more comfort, Judy?
And if we, sorry, and if we can't get the blade, it could go towards something else.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not locked on it, but we gotta have something to even start moving.
Right.
And we had estimates on the ones that were in the middle, and those were eight by twelve, I think, or, you know, ten, two feet underneath. And those are around four thousand dollars apiece, I think, five thousand. Well, we didn't get approved, so we're not gonna go out.
I don't know how you'd make those breakaway.
Come up with a concept first. Yeah.
I make a motion to approve thirty thousand as matching funds.
I'll second it.
Evans?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Truby?
Yay.
Myers?
If you vote no, it's fine. You look very distraught over there.
I, I can't think. Um, I'm gonna go nay.
Von Thayer?
Yeah.
Douglas?
I'm gonna go yay on the grounds that we can figure out what we're gonna get later.
You don't get to qualify your vote.
I know, but I'm doing it anyways.
Notch.
Oh, yay.
Motion approved.
Cool. All right. Motion adjourned.
Oh, you were making the motion.
A motion to adjourn.
I, I, I-
And Truby's on it.
Did you just?
Truby's on it. Thank you all so much for hanging out.
Second it.
Truby.
It really does look cool though.
Seriously, it's nine-thirty, people?
Oh, my gosh. I think this is a-
Mayor?
Yay.
Truby?
Yay.
I think this is a lot.
Evans?
Yes.
Myers?
On the corners.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yeah.
Douglas?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
All right. Thank you, everybody.